It's it's all good. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the October twenty one, two thousand and twenty two virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez. My pronouns are he, him, his, and I'm the acting chairman of the ZBA. Like the last few months, I want to start this meeting out by prefacing that we have been seeing a lot of photographs in the proposed findings of fact that are not helpful. We need photographs of more than just the subject property and definitely more than just a photograph showing your posted notice. For variations, when we say we want photographs of the entire block, we mean the entire block. That means both sides of the street. For special use expert reports, we need the photographs to be in color and visible. We've been receiving badly photocopied reports where we can't see the photographs. This is not helpful and makes our pre-review a lot less efficient. And now on with the meeting. First, pursuant to my powers as acting chairman, I hereby designate member Ann McDonald to take Angela Brooks' place as a regular member at today's meeting. And thank you for being with us today. Second, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on October fourteen, two thousand and twenty two, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID nineteen public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until November fourteen, two thousand and twenty two. Thus, section seven E one of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Third, I am making a determination pursuant to section seventy two of the Open Meetings Act that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I am also making a determination pursuant to section seventy five that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals or its chief administrative officer or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Fourth, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, which are posted to the board's website. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and the city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. For those of you who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things for those who will be participating in the meeting. One, we are operating under the emergency rules, so for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date in time, you will not be able to reference them. Two, all participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will promote you to a panelist. Please accept the promotion. Three, if you are here in opposition or support of a matter, when your matter is called, please raise your hand so that we know you are here and may transfer you to a panelist. If you are listening to this meeting via phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Four, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Five, please be mindful of background noise and please mute yourself when you are not speaking at all times, including now. Six, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important that two people not speak at the same time. You might see me muting someone if that happens. Seven, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat that. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream in tandem. Eight, please make sure you identify yourself when you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. When I do swear you in, please spell your last name. Nine, if an applicant or anyone in opposition or support to the application has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve the issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until subsequent meeting. Ten, after your matter or matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting to ensure adequate capacity. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which I hope you are, I encourage you to watch the livestream, which is accessible from our website. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can hear and see me. Commissioner Esposito?
Present, I can hear and see you.
Commissioner McDonald?
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Commissioner Toya?
Present, and I can hear and see you.
I am present, so quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, the agenda has been approved. Now, before I go on to take continuances and withdrawals, I'm going to turn the floor over to the new forty-third ward alderman, Timmy Knudsen.
Thanks very much, Commissioner, and good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for letting me steal a minute of your time today. My name's Timmy Knudsen. I used to be the chair of the zoning board of appeals, but one month ago, I was confirmed on the Chicago City Council as alder of the forty-third ward, at which point I immediately resigned from the ZBA. I just wanted to pop on this morning to say goodbye because it all happened so quickly. At least that's just goodbye from wearing this hat. And also, I wanted to say thank you to several people on this call. Really, a lot of people who worked so hard to make this important and independent board tick. My time on ZBA was that of virtual chair. I always looked forward to hosting an in-person meeting, but here we are still on Zoom. And as as with the virtual setting came new important issues like ensuring everyone seeking to appear in front of the board had access to Wi-Fi or a computer. Behind the scenes, the staff and ZBA leaders are doing a ton of important work to ensure that access. In addition, the team has been working to streamline what can be a lengthy and expensive process. Truthfully, I learned a ton chairing this board and their lessons. I'm really grateful to be taking forward on to city council. ZBA is a very impactful board, and so I want to thank all the experts on here today. You know, my friend Sam Toya, thank you so much, Zurich Esposito, Brian Sanchez, Angela Brooks. In addition to the alternate members, Ann McDonald, Vishali Rao, the whole group, I've learned so much from you in often what became marathon meetings, doing important work into the evening. So much work goes into each meeting, the planning ahead of time all month, and for that, I just want to give a massive thanks to Victor. Victor Asa, you're incredible. Janine Klitsch Jensen and Jeanette Blazkowicz, you always put a smile on my face and also kept me truthfully organized, which is a is a hard task to do. Frances Cahill, Nancy Radzovich, our court reporters, this meeting couldn't be done out done with any without any of you. Also, I want to give a thanks to zoning administrator Patrick Murphy and Commissioner Maurice Cox, who I look forward to working with very closely going forward in this new role. All of you taught me how to do this role, and for that, I'm so appreciative. And to everyone who frequents this meeting, our frequent flyers, be it the lawyers or developers, I look forward to getting to know you with a different lens. Now, I'll stop thinking so that Acting Chair Sanchez can get to the fun that is continuances and withdrawals. I always really enjoyed that chapter of the meeting, but truthfully, thank you all. I can't wait to to get to know you from this different role and serving as chair of ZBA has been an incredible experience for me. So thanks, Brian.
Well, thank you, Alderman. I want to say that it's been a pleasure working with you the last two years and getting to know you. I wish you the best of luck as alderman, and I look forward to seeing you in your different capacity. Come for us, come before us when you have zoning issues in your ward.
Yeah, I think you'll be seeing me a lot, so beware.
I look forward to it.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a good meeting.
All right, and now we are going to move to continuances and withdrawals. Okay, we've got some. Victor, do you do you want to speak? On two ninety-four dash twenty-two dash S?
Yes, Chairman, this is Victory Sound Manager for the zoning board. In preparing for the meeting, we discovered that I inadvertently omitted to provide the co-applicant's name Biofarm on the notices that were published and that were mailed out to the surrounding property owners within two hundred and fifty feet. So I'm asking for a one-month continuance so that I can republish an amended notice and re-mail an amended notice to the surrounding property owners that are entitled to notice for this subject property.
Do we have someone for the applicant?
Yeah, I believe Amy Degnan is on.
I just promoted her.
And then we also have an objector, Robert Brown, that is on as well.
Hi, my name is Amy Degnan. I'm with the law firm George's Incident Wiki on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, and so there's been a request, it's really on the board's own motion to continue it to November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to correct a clerical error regarding the notice. Do you have any objection?
We do not have an objection, and we agree with the continuance. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so calendar number two ninety-four dash twenty-two dash S will be continued to.
Excuse me, there's an objector.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, do you have an do you have an objection to the continuance?
Yes, I do, and I just just a quick comment.
If the comment, hold on, hold on, hold up, hold up. If the comment relates to the continuance, I'm I'm okay with hearing it. I don't want to.
I was just gonna say.
Of the matter.
No, 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 I was just gonna say thank you to the board, that's all.
Oh.
If it's a for all your hard work, probably hard work on a on a beautiful Friday, that's that was my comment, so. Okay. So it's it's the opinion of the objectors that a continuance issued on this would be highly prejudicial to the objectors. We actually believe, and we would intend to make the argument in the hearing today, that there really is only one applicant. And granting the continuance on the grounds of this clerical error actually prejudges the validity of the arguments without our ability to introduce that evidence. We were not given any notice until now that the board had intended to issue a motion for a continuance, while the applicant through ex parte conversations was giving well-advanced notice to this. We actually learned of this through a news reporter who had spoke with the public affairs person for the applicant. So we've not been given, you know, the same notice and consideration that the applicant got through ex parte discussions prior to the meeting this morning. The objectors are not paid consultants, as you know. Several objectors have taken time off their work today in order to participate in the public hearing. It's both a right and a civic duty. A continuance places an unnecessary financial and personal burden, which will likely prevent them from taking another day off, thereby advantaging the applicant at the expense of the public interest. I understand that there's a clerical error from from that perspective. We would like the opportunity in the hearing today to demonstrate that there truly is only one applicant, and the facts will bear that out. I think it's within, I'll I'll stop, I guess I'll stop there.
Okay, so.
This is a prejudice, we just think it's a very highly prejudicial decision. This has been a David and Goliath from the very beginning. There's multiple cases where the where the community has been squashed and censored in the last several months on this, and this would be yet another opportunity to to squash objectors who've taken time off work today to do this and also to prejudice one of our key arguments.
Okay, well, I hear your objection. It's overruled. We're going to continue to this matter to to this is two ninety-four dash twenty-two dash S will be continued to November eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two. No further notice will be given. This is a notice issue. We have to comply with the zoning ordinance, and we are going to do that. Any other continuances or withdrawals? Somebody here on two ninety-five dash twenty-two dash S?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Councilor Augustine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So yes, I am the attorney on two ninety-five two two S applicant is Jaris Blade Masters One LLC, special use for a barber shop. I got into this matter late and in working with the ZBA, we realized that the address on the application, the notice, as well as the city's notice was incorrect. Sixty-one forty-four is not the address. It actually should be sixty-one forty-two, so we've agreed to withdraw the application and then refile. So I'm here today to withdraw the application.
Okay, so two ninety-five dash twenty-two dash S is hereby withdrawn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is somebody here for three fifty-four dash twenty-two dash Z?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Councilor Barton.
I'm here on behalf of the applicant for three fifty-four twenty-two S. The the applicant is Nicola Zatkovic, and he will be withdrawing this case. This is on the bottom of page three, address eight thirty-eight North Hermitage.
Got it. What was the case number again?
It's three five four.
Dash twenty-two Z. Z. Thank you. Okay, so three fifty-four dash twenty-two dash Z will be withdrawn.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other continuances or withdrawals? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, hearing none, we are going to move to the regular call. Before we start, I do want to point out that we have a very full call today. The board has reviewed everything submitted for the matters that are up today. For matters where we do not have objectors, do want the attorneys to do the short form. That is, get your witnesses on to affirm their affidavits, and then we'll open it up for board questions. Obviously, if your matter has objectors, we will need you to put your case on in full so the objectors can hear all testimony. Okay, so we are starting with calendar number three twenty dash twenty-one dash S. This is nine oh two West one hundred and nineteenth Street.
Good morning.
Good morning, Counselor.
Tamara Walker for the matter you just mentioned, nine oh two West nineteenth Street.
And if there are any objectors, please raise your hand, and we'll get you promoted. I'm not seeing any, Councilor Walker. Please proceed. This is an extension request?
Yes, sure. Yes, it is, Chairman. My client Anna Stroud is also present on the call, but I don't see her promoted as a panelist.
I don't see Anna Stroud unless she is dialing in from a phone number.
Hmm, I know she logged in this morning. I spoke with her this morning.
Yes, she's on the phone.
Okay.
Please press star six to unmute.
Okay, I think she's with us. Anna, are you there?
Star six to unmute. She's muted right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I see her now.
I can see her as well. She's just muted. Ms. Stroud, if you can hit star six, you should be able to unmute.
I don't know if she's having technical difficulties or. Hmm, I'll try texting. I mean, I can present what was presented as far as the extension packet. But I assume that the chairman would want to hear my client's testimony on that matter. However, we're open to proceed differently.
I've I've, well, yeah, I mean, we probably should at least get her sworn in. We do, we do need her. We do need her here.
Okay, Ms. Stroud, you should press, you said star six, seven?
Star six.
Star six to unmute. I just texted her the same.
Good morning.
Oh, there she is.
There we go. Hi, I'm Ms. Stroud. This is Commissioner Sanchez. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. All right, we're we're going to begin here, but before we do, could you state your name and address, please?
Anna Stroud, five hundred East Thirty-third Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one six, apartment fourteen oh six.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Councilor Walker, please proceed.
Thank you. Ms. Stroud, please state your full name for the record.
Anna Stroud.
And we made an application to for the zoning board of appeals for a special use to establish a tavern at nine oh two West one hundred and nineteenth Street, correct?
Yes.
And that resolution was approved on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Notice mailed out on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason that we've had to make a special use extension request is because you had some delays in getting your building permit issued. Is that correct?
Yes.
And when I say building permit, I'm referring to the building permit at nine oh two West one hundred and nineteenth Street. So now that permit has subsequently issued. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, what were the reasons for the delay in the permit? If you can.
I couldn't get in touch. I couldn't get in touch with Brian McNichols, the architect, for about six or seven months, probably a little longer.
Okay.
I emailed, I emailed, I phoned, and it was six or seven months, so I couldn't get in touch with him, so I can move forward with anything.
Did you ultimately file a complaint against your architect because of his nonresponsiveness?
Yes, I did. I filed several complaints, and then once I filed the complaint, he did respond and called.
Okay, and so you were able to eventually get the plans approved and stamped and move forward, and your building permit is now issued. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is work taking place at the subject property now pursuant to the permit?
Yes.
And you need the special use to remain in place in order to operate your business per the application we originally made. Is that correct?
Yes.
Nothing further, Chairman.
What's the the amount of the extent extension you're seeking?
Oh, the time period?
Yeah.
We would need. So I want to make sure that I'm clear. If she's granted a special use to establish a tavern, that would extend until the tavern is established and operational. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, what was what was the question?
Okay, so her special use was for her to establish a tavern at the subject location. So what I'm stating is that now that that's underway, once the buildout is complete, the tavern will be free to operate from that special use. So that's going to kind of determine how long I'm going to ask for.
Well, you you can you can get up to one year.
Okay.
So if you want to request up to up to a year.
Got you. So I request a year.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I I think we have everything we need, Counselor. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the decision is at the end of the meeting, is that?
Correct, yeah, we vote at the end of the meeting and and we'll come, we'll go in a closed session to vote or to to discuss, and then we will come back to vote.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stroud.
And thank you both. Y'all have a great evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I hope you guys can enjoy this weather at some point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next up is calendar number three forty-two dash twenty-two dash S. This is forty twenty-four West Madison. I can see we've got Nancy from DPD on. Nancy, I'm sure you're here to read the department's recommendation. Let's see if we've got the applicant. And if there are any objectors for this matter, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. One second, everybody.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just give me one second here. Okay, I can see we've got Tiffany Steen. Do we also have Reggie Sanders?
I don't see Reggie Sanders.
Ms. Dean is is is, are you expecting Reggie Sanders?
No, I'm not.
Okay. All right, oh, first, let's get to the DPD recommendation. Nancy, could you state your name and role, please?
Absolutely. Nancy Raisovich, Assistant Commissioner with the Zoning Bureau in the Department of Planning and Development.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great. Go ahead and read the recommendation.
Okay, this is for three forty-two twenty-two S. Excuse me, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general web fear of the neighborhood. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Dean, what brings you here today?
I'd like to open my own salon. I've been doing hair for twelve years now, so I like to open my salon.
Okay, so you've been doing it for twelve years. What kind of hours are you planning to hold?
We, they're like right now, we're still, we're trying to get the hair business into the banker's hour. get the hair business into the banker's hour. So right now, we're doing from nine AM to seven PM. And that's on the weekends, but on the weekday, from Monday to Thursday, we're from nine AM to six PM.
When you say right now, you're, you're not, you're not operating at the location yet, are you?
No, I, the, the salon has a retail space in it as well, so right now we do operate as retail.
Oh, okay, you're just not.
Right, we can't. Nope, not yet.
Okay, how many employees are gonna, or do you anticipate having?
It's set up to house a total of eight hairstylists.
Okay. You know what? Did I, did I swear you in at the beginning?
No.
No, let me, let me do that. Could you state your name and address, please?
My home address?
Yes.
My name is Tiffany Steen, and I live at two two five Will Glen Lane, Oak Brook, Illinois, six oh five two three. And.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
And before I swore you in, the questions that I asked you and the, and the answers that you gave, tho- those were all truthful, correct?
Yes, truthful.
Any questions from the board? I think we have everything we need for this one, Ms. Dean. We're gonna take it under advisement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now moving to calendar number three forty-three dash twenty-two dash Z. This is fifty-five fifty-two to fifty-six West Edmonds. There are any objectors or supporters, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Can see we've got Counselor Colpak. We've got Tim Kelly, and we have Kirk Alexikos. So it looks like we have everybody. And I'm not seeing any objectors, please raise your hand if, if you're here in support or objection, we'll get you promoted. But I'm not seeing any Counselor Colpak, so please proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Colpak with offices at sixty-seven sixty-seven North Milwaukee Avenue. I represent the applicant, Mr. Timothy Kelly. We're requesting variation to expand existing floor area by nine hundred and fifty-six square feet for a proposed fourth addition to existing three-story, eight-unit building with a parking space. Mr. Chairman, since there are no objectors, would, would you like me to do a brief overview or just go right to the?
You can do, you can do a very brief overview, but then just get your witnesses to swear to their affidavits.
That's fine, thank you. The existing three-story, eight-unit building is currently in an RT four zoning district in Jefferson Park, two dwelling units in the lower garden level, three dwelling units on the second floor, and three, three dwelling units on the upper level. The eight-unit building is currently occupied by Blessed Virgin Mary Sisterhood. Each dwelling unit consists either of one or two bedrooms. This building was built in nineteen sixty-one and offers very little outside of open space, like a balcony or patio or any decks. The purpose of this application is not to add additional units, but rather to provide these amenities for the sisters. There would be no, no increase, will meet the standards of the height under the RT four district. We need the fifteen percent which are, is allowed under section seventeen thirteen eleven oh one G. And if the building is more than fifty years old, we can request a fifteen percent increase in the FAR. If this is passed, we will meet that criteria. At this point, I would just like to call my first witness, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, Mr. Kelly, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Timothy Kelly, four eight zero five North Claremont Avenue, Unit four zero three, Chicago six zero six five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, you prepared a findings of fact, and if you were asked to testify further, you testified in substantial conformity to those findings of fact. Is that correct?
Yes.
No further questions from Mr. Kelly.
Sure, just one, one question for Mr. Kelly. Are, are you the, could you tell us what your role is with, with regard to Kirkwood Investment Group LLC?
I'm the sole shareholder of it.
Okay, is the manager of the LLC?
Correct.
Okay. All right, let's go to Mr. Alexikos. Could you state your name and address, please?
Hello, my name is Kirk Alexakos, five seven three one North Central Avenue in Chicago, six oh six four six.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you have visited this property and observed it, is that correct? And you have filed an affidavit with this petition? And if you were asked to testify, you testified substantial conformity to that affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes, I have, and yes, I will.
I have no further questions for my architect.
I've got one question. The hardship here is the existing building, is that correct?
Yes, basically, the existing building, when it was built back in the early sixties, did not contemplate any outdoor amenities whatsoever. The sisters are pretty much confined in their building. This would give them the ability to have some outdoor area and some more available living area for this building.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, moving along to calendar number three forty-four dash twenty-two dash Z. This is sixty-nine fifty North Oleander. Please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. If you're here in support or objection, please raise your hand. Do we have Maureen Gutierrez?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, excellent, excellent. It's, it's just, just you, is that correct?
It's my husband also, Paul.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, I'll swear both of you in. Maureen, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Maureen Gutierrez, sixty-nine fifty North Oleander, Chicago, six oh six three one.
All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, and, and Paul, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure, Paul Gutierrez, sixty-nine fifty North Oleander, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, tell us what brings you here today.
Well, our, my wife and I want to request a variation to reduce the combined setback from the required sixteen point five to thirteen point forty-three, and the front setback from thirty point six zero to twenty-six point five six on our property to add a second story addition to our single-story home.
Okay.
Right now, we're, we're only one of two homes on a block that's a single story, so we believe that our plans will keep a look consistent with our neighbors. We'll give an additional space and bedrooms for a family of five. We spoke to several of our neighbors. They all have positive feedback on our plans. And we also have letters from our immediate neighbors on the north and south side of the property in support of our plans. We purchased the house in May of twenty nineteen. We actually applied for variance back in twenty twenty. We put everything on hold, so we're trying to start it up again.
We were approved. We were just, when COVID hit, we decided to wait and to see what was happening with the pricing.
Yeah, material costs got pretty expensive.
Okay, so you've, you've spoken with the neighbors to, on, on both sides?
Yeah.
Yes. And they are in approval or have no objection?
No, they gave actually support letters for us.
Now, a- as far as the, you know, one of the things that we look at is, is the hardship. If, if we don't grant the variation, can you, can you tell us what, what the hardship is?
Well, when we, we sold our old home, it was a much bigger home, but in a different area. So when we purchased the home, it is much smaller than, than what we had. We always had the intention of putting in addition, hopefully, to add individual bedrooms for our kids. Right now, we have three bedrooms. We really do need a fourth. Not to mention that the, the space is getting cramped now that they're getting a little older. It's a half basement, so the main floor area is, is smaller than, than what we would like.
But there's, there's a lot of work right now also to be done in the house, knowing that buying the house going in, so we're just kind of putting bandages on the house right now until we're able to.
It needs a lot of updating.
Yeah. Plumbing, everything. It's a lot of issues with that.
Electrical.
Is, is the existing home encroaching in any of the setbacks?
No, we're just going straight up. Well, the side setback is the, when the, the issue was with the variance. But we're going just straight up.
We're, we're coming forward in the front just to meet, the house is in odd shapes where it's, we're just on the two end sides, we're just meeting to the front of the house where it's already existing.
Okay, so are you, are you, are you, are you just building up from the existing walls of the, of the first floor?
Yes. The, the, except the front two corners are, are right now recessed in about six feet, so we're just bringing them back forward to match the, the front.
Okay. So are there any questions from the board?
Yeah, I just had one question, Paul and Maureen Gutierrez, Commissioner McDonald, did you consider any other designs or was there a reason, particular reason you settled on this one that needed the additional setback relief?
No, we, we.
Our, our old design, we were going back further and down into the basement, but as far as cost-wise, we kind of downsized our plans just to go up with, instead to make more room that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, I think we have everything we need. We'll take this one under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is three forty-five dash twenty-two dash S and three forty-six dash twenty-two dash S. If you're here on these matters, please raise your hand. We'll get you promoted. Yes, yes, we can. Let me just get everybody up here.
Chairman, Chairman, just want to remind that anyone who's on the phone can press star nine to raise their hand in Zoom, star nine.
Thank you, Kamal. That's star nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone.
I have two brief questions, if you don't mind. It's my first time doing this, so first question is, am I allowed to make a statement to go into record? And the next question is, if I have objectors, may I ask them questions?
The, yes, you're, so we're gonna get there, but yes, you're gonna have the opportunity to make your case. You're, you're pro se, right? You, you don't have an attorney?
Yes, I don't have an attorney.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll be able to put on your case. I'll swear you in, you'll be able to put on your case, and then if there's objectors, the objectors will then state their objections. They'll, they'll be able to ask you questions. You can ask them questions. So there will be a, a full, a full dialogue. But I kind of want to figure out who everyone is on this one. I can see we have Aldman Mitchell. Janelle Shelton?
Yes.
Are you in support or objection?
I'm actually in support of the applicant. I'm the expediter, so I'm the one that's dealing with the, the buildout and everything afterwards, too.
Okay, okay, great. We will, we'll, we'll get to you. I'm just gonna go and figure out who, who everyone is. Brent Baldwin, are you here in support or objection?
I'm in support. I'm the appraiser, for the affidavit.
Okay, okay, great. Let's see. Attorney Meredith Hammer?
Hi, this is Attorney Meredith Hammer.
Hi, are, are you here in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay. Okay. Janice? Could you unmute, please?
Morning.
Hi, good morning. Are you here in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay. Sha- Shanna? Could you unmute, please?
Hi, it's Shanna.
Are you here in support or objection?
Support.
Okay. Sharon Lewis?
Yes.
Are you in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay, thank you. Veronica Kyle?
Hi, I'm here, I'm a concerned objector.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone else? Have I, oh, I can see there's a couple more hands raised. All right, I'm promoting the hands raised to panelists. Please accept the promotion. Okay, we've got the, the third district commander. Are, are you here in support or objection?
Objection.
Okay. And let's see, I've got Captain Ramirez. Are you here in supporter objection? You're, you're muted.
I'm sorry, objection.
Okay, Melanie Campbell. Supporter objection? You're, you're muted as well. Melanie Campbell?
I am objection.
Okay. Is there anyone whose name I haven't called yet? If so, please speak now. Okay, and I can see we've got Alderman Mitchell on, Alderman Mitchell, do you want to speak at the beginning or at the end?
I'll wait to the end.
Okay, all right, thank you.
By the way, Fourth District Lieutenant Stephen Carroll is on Zoom as well.
Oh, okay, Stephen Carroll, are you here in supporter objection?
Sergeant Carroll, Fourth District, we're here for objection.
Okay. Okay. Now that we have everybody promoted, I want to remind everyone that this is not a town hall, this is a hearing, so we as the board are looking for evidence that either supports or does not support the applicant's case. Here is how the hearing is going to proceed, first, the applicant will put on their case and any of their witnesses, if any. If there's supporters, we'll turn to the supporters and ask as to why they're in support. Then we'll turn to the objectors and the objectors can put on their case as well as ask questions of the applicant's witnesses and supporters, if there are supporters, and I think there are here. After that, the applicant can ask questions of the objectors. Then we'll return to the applicant for any rebuttal testimony and closing remarks. After that, the board will take the matter under advisement. Throughout the hearing, board members will be asking questions of both the applicant and objectors. Okay, Mr. Mitchell or Merrill, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Derek Morell, my address is 1332 East 72nd Place, Chicago, Illinois, 60619.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, I'm gonna get your two witnesses sworn in as well, Brent Baldwin, could you state your name and address, please?
That's Brent Baldwin, 55 West West 20th Street, Lombard, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and Janelle Shelton, could you state your name and address, please?
Ah, yes, Commissioner, sorry, Janelle Shelton, address is 3939 South Lake Park Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 60653.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Merrill, what brings you here today?
I'm here because I'm petitioning the board for a special use license to operate a barber shop, pedicure, and a special masseuse, licensed masseuse at the area. For the nail tech and the masseuse, I needed a special use license to be in operation.
Okay, thank you, you know what, before we keep going, let me have Nancy Radzovich read the Department of Planning's recommendation. Nancy, are you on?
Yeah.
Okay, great, could you read the recommendations?
And this is for 345 and 346?
That's correct, yes.
The Department of Planning for 345-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the barber shop slash nail salon due to the four cease and desist orders that were issued against the applicant Pharaoh Gentleman Spa, and because the Department of Planning and Development have not been advised that all open violations have been resolved. 346-22-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the massage establishment due to the four cease and desist orders that were issued against the applicant Pharaoh Gentleman Spa, and because the Department of Planning and Development have not been advised that all open violations have been resolved.
Okay, thank you. First, before you continue, if you're not speaking right now, please mute yourself, we are getting some feedback from someone, so please mute if you're not speaking.
What are the four cease and desist orders and what violations, because I haven't went through any cease and desist or any violation notices for the property?
Who can speak to the cease and desist orders?
Commissioner, I'll speak to it, I just received a call, Alderman, great, it's a seventh ward.
Before you start, Alderman, could you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, proceed.
Okay, good morning, everyone, I just received a call from Business Affairs and Consumer Protection informing me they will not join the call, however, they have sent over to the board the documentation that supports the cease and desist order. But in a nutshell, on, for 8/30/2022, in response, in response to calls from my office regarding the proposed business and activity at the location, BACP and Department of Buildings responded. They, 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 they visited the location and issued a cease and desist order for a number of activities including liquor consumption on premises, tobacco dealing, massage establishment, and public places of amusement, both without licenses. And they continued to monitor the location from that point. The calls that we got from the community included activity at the location without permits, like a party, they noted that there was some form of strip club activity, and members of the community actually said they witnessed, I did not witness it, I visited the location several times at night and during it just to check things out, I did not witness that, but my constituents have reported that. In talking with the owner of the property, he, he he is not, based on what the community in my office has reported to him, he has taken a stance that he is not supportive of this anymore, and I think he reached out to Mr. Merrill to discuss that with him. But once again, the documentation from the cease and disorder, I've been told, has been forwarded to you guys.
Okay. Mr. Morell, you're, I had to mute you because we were getting feedback from you, but, so you have to unmute.
Okay, I can hear you guys, well, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
I never received a cease and desist order from anyone, the few times that we were in the establishment was to clean up the establishment, I had a few people help me that invested, and a few of the workers helped me mop up, straighten up. As far as a stripper establishment, I have no recollection or any idea where they got the idea from. It's strictly a barber shop, nail shop, and a massage there. We are there, you know, I just had the windows vandalized from the neighborhood, we are there boarding up. I had to file a police report for a break in, we had to straighten that up. Other than that, I have deliveries coming in where we have a worker party unload some of the material as far as the barber chairs and everything in case we can get open. And so that's the only time we're there, we play music to occupy the time while we're there, we leave out, we lock up, and that's it, we clean up. So as far as me receiving anything in person or anybody visiting saying stop something that I'm doing, that never happened, that never took place, I had, I just been notified three weeks later, because I barely go there to check on the place, because I have cameras now, that the windows was broken. So I just had to have somebody board up the windows at the location, we haven't been occupying the space for anything.
Okay. Ms. Shelton, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, I'm sorry about that, so far as on the violation part, we are working to cure those violations, the list of violations, applying for the standard permits and plans.
Oh, before you, before you continue, oh, no, wait, I did swear.
Yeah, you swore me in.
Okay, all right, yes, okay, all right.
Yes, I understand, and then outside of any cease and desist order was never notified, typically I will get notified or we'll work on that with the business department, no notices has been left on the building. Even on the cameras, we have had city inspectors come by and try to gank on the doors on the cameras, and everything is locked up and boarded, boarded up unless we're, he's trying to get his supplies, so not really sure about those cease and desist orders, and if there's not any evidence to show it, it shouldn't be brought up in this case.
What are the, you mentioned some violations that you're working to correct, what are those violations?
Just typically on the building, any violation far is like with the mason work or just the typical rehab and that we're gonna do anyway to make it up to scale, so what we need to be for the build out.
Okay.
So the architect we're working on, we're getting different quotes for the architect, but as you know, as an expediter, we're applying for the violations that will be addressed when we do the standard build out.
Okay. Alderman Mitchell, I can see you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak now?
Yeah, a couple of things, you, the board was forwarded a flyer that advertised on June 17, 2022, an event that was going on at the club. There is no licenses granted to this business, so therefore advertising this type of activity is in violation of both ordinances at the BACP level licensing and the building violations, because this, these type of buildings by by virtue of the zoning, which is B1 through 3, are not permitted by right at that building. And like, once again, as you can see, you were, and I hope you guys have it, you afforded the flight on June 17, 2022. They were advertising the advertising event at that location, which would be involved, which they would have had no licenses to even, to even conduct this type of activity. That's number one, number two, for, for, for there to have been issued violations, that means the cease and desist order is part of that. So, and as it's coming up on the screen right now, there's the cease and desist order.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at that right now as you're speaking, Alderman. Mr. Morell, if you can look to the screen, it's being shared on the screen right now, it looks like a series of cease and desist. 2672 East 75th Street is the mailing address care of Derek Morell.
Yeah, that is the mailing address, can you hear me? That is the mailing address for the business, but due to the fact that the business is not open, we haven't been able to put a mailbox at that facility because we're not operational. In regards to what the Alderman is speaking upon on the 17th of June, that was a private investors gathering that we had at the location, not open to the public. No money was collected for the, for the gathering, it was hosting the employees at the establishment showing the investors who will be there and what services they provide, at the bottom is the dread tech that was hired from Houston, the masseuse is right there, the nail tech is right there. There was no payment for any of the, any of the services that was presented to the investors.
Mr. Morell, I'm looking at the, at the advertisement that's on the screen right now. It says Pharaoh Gentleman Spa Grand Opening, $15 entry fee, $10 BYOB fee, $40 hookah per hour, $15 ice bucket with five cups, chaser, no outside cups, ice or chaser, $10 drink cigar tickets, limited to double shot, June 17, 2022, 2673 East 75th Street. Spa Services, 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM, stripper show 8:00 PM until, it doesn't have an end time. Is this a ad that you prepared?
That is not by me.
Have you seen this ad before today?
This is my first time having this brought to my attention. We have not, we have not raised a dollar at that establishment since we've been there, starting this whole special use license since March.
Did you have an event on June 17, 2022 at the premises?
On June 17, I had investors meeting at the premises, showing the barbers, the nail tech, and the masseuse, and we also had my friend who did free of charge, no payment, play his saxophone music for the investors while they were there looking at the place.
But, but you've never seen this ad and you don't know where it came from?
This ad is new to me, I have promoters that are doing flyers to build up the conversation about the establishment, but I have no control over the flyers that they create to introduce the establishment to potential new clients once it does get open.
Do you have any, for the Pharaoh Gentleman Spa, do you have any social media presence?
Not at this moment, I'm waiting on, the only thing I do on my page is let people know that I'm working on building a spa and what the spa has to offer as far as the amenities, where you get your haircut, you get your feet done, you get a massage, that's all I have on my page.
Do you know if this ad was posted on the Facebook page for Pharaoh Gentleman Spa?
I don't even have control of Pharaoh's Gentleman Spa Facebook page, that is a promoter that created a page to promote the company for when it opens.
What's the name of the promoter?
Dion, Neon Dion.
Dion what?
Neon Dion, that's his promotion name, his actual name is Dion Harding.
Okay, is he, is Dion Harding a friend of yours?
Yes, I graduated with him, he's been in promotions for about three or four years now. What he do is take his following and introduce them to new businesses and locations as far as food trucks, restaurants, night events, and things of that nature. He has a large following over, over 20,000 people in the Chicago area, and so pretty much his promotions brings a large mass of people when establishments are up and running.
And you didn't have any conversations with him about this promotion?
I'm sorry, we got muted.
My question was, you didn't have any conversations with him about this promotion?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your last, we had, I had a call trying to break in and it muted the phone.
Sure, the question is, you didn't- Sure. The que- the question is, you, you didn't have any conversations with your, uh, promoter? About this, uh, ad, this advertisement that we're looking at?
Uh, no, I had no. I had no conversations with him because I haven't paid him anything. To do any promotions because we're not licensed to be open yet. I've been, I've been patiently waiting on my hearing. Um, I was under the understanding that it might have happened in August. August got pushed to September. September got pushed to October. So I haven't hired anybody for anything. I lost most of the workers due to the delay. I have to re, uh, I have to re, uh, find barbers and everything due to the delay. So we haven't done anything.
But you, but you did have a conversation with Mr. Harding about having an event. At the premises on June seventeen of twenty twenty-two, is that correct?
I had a conversation with Mr. Harding in regards to me having investors, uh, coming to the space on June seventeen. Um, looking to, uh, find more equity to build out the place once we get licensed. That's what I had a conversation with him about. And. He asked me that I wanted him to do anything in regards to it. I said, it's nothing to do because it's a private, uh, investors meeting. And there's really, you know, nothing we can do at the place because my expediter. Has explained and stressed to me that we can't do anything at the location involving business. All we can do is clean up and show the property to the future investors. And have meetings with, uh, potential employees at the location. I had meetings with security. I have armed security service for the location. Um. I had meeting with my host. I had meetings with my, my nail techs. I had meetings with the barbers. And that started back. In April. After that, we haven't done anything, no meetings, no, no, uh, investors. We haven't had a soul come into that establishment since June.
Okay, um, I can see, uh, Ms. Shelton as her hand raised. Let's, we're going to go to Ms. Shelton and then we'll go to, uh. Mr. Baldwin, and then we're going to turn to the, to the rest of the objectors.
Apologize, that was my hand raised from earlier. Thank you.
Mister, Mister Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay, well, uh, you're, you're, you're here in, in, uh, in, in support of, of the application, correct?
Yes, I, I completed a, a special use analysis, um, for the, um, build out of a barber shop and massage parlor.
Right, yeah, right, you're the, uh, the, the appraiser.
Yes.
Okay, great. And, and, and we, we do recognize your expertise. Um, could you? Tell us, um. Uh, but what you found? With regard to this.
Yeah, I inspected the property, the surrounding area, um, you know, in, in the building is currently. You know, pretty much empty when I went through it, um, needs work, uh, but looking at the surrounding area. You know, I felt that there was, uh, no adverse effect of having, um, you know, a barber shop, um, massage area. And that it would promote employment for the area and it's very walkable. Cause a lot, there's a lot, a lot of multi-unit buildings in the area.
When did you, uh, visit the property?
Uh, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
When you visited the property, did you see any ads like the one that is currently showing on the screen?
No, no, I, there, there was nothing that I, I believe the windows might have even been, um. Uh, you know, blacked out. So I, I think it was, no, I didn't see anything at that time.
Prior to today, have you ever seen this, this advertisement?
No. I have not.
Okay.
I mean, the, the report I completed was the last time I, you know, really had anything to do with the property.
Any questions from the board of the applicant or witnesses before we move to the objectors?
May, may I make my statement, uh, per request at the start of this?
Sure, yeah.
Alright. So I just would like to introduce myself and give, um, a history of, of myself and my business. And so I will start by, um, letting the board and objectors and the witnesses know. How I expect to impact the community. Uh, my location will bring in jobs, which employs fifteen, uh, looking to employ fifteen people as of today. Uh, I have back to school drives for, uh, people that's not fortunate, which are already participating. Outside of the general spa, but I'm looking, but I'm looking. I'm looking for putting it into the community where the spa is located. Winter coat drives also, free back to school supplies and haircuts. Um, just fixing up a closed down building brings property value up. Uh, for people that can't afford to travel up north to receive a, uh, massage like I do myself when I go on vacation. You can now get it in your own neighborhood where you reside at. Um. For the safety part, I have armed security that increases safety in a neighborhood. Um, I have appointment only where there is no walk-ins, where someone feels fear for their life while getting a haircut. Um, I have tenant windows where you can't see in. And the most main thing I have is cameras. Um, where it can help law enforcement, uh, help on cases. We recently, about a month and a half ago, had a old lady get robbed at gunpoint. The FBI couldn't obtain too much footage because it's nothing but closed down. And, uh, boarded up storefronts down Seventy-Fifth. So with my cameras, it will help the law enforcement figure out what crimes are being committed. And what vehicles are being driven, I've been, uh, uh, do these crimes. Uh, who I am as a person, as Derek Morel, I am a father, a football coach for the youth. I am a business person. I am a mentor for young and first, uh, black individuals. I am a helper of the community. As I stated before, I do back to school drive, also feed the homeless around Christmas with my kids. We don't even celebrate Christmas. I Christmas is spending, going out to, uh, Tent City. Feeding and giving warm clothing to the, uh, homeless. Um, what do my business stand for? Helping people like myself grow into business owners like myself. Showing others that if you invest in your community and not destroy it, you can build yourself up. And that is my statement that I would like to read to the objectors and the board.
Okay, I, and I believe, um. These, uh, cease and desist orders have now, um, been sent to your email. So you should have. Okay, uh, before we move to the objectors, uh, does the board have any, uh, questions of the applicant right now? Okay, hearing none, we are gonna, uh, move with, to the objectors. Um, and I can see that, uh, Janice has her hand raised. Oh, wait, actually, do we have some supporters first? We do have some supporters.
We do. I'm, I'm so glad you said that because that, that's really kind of disrespectful. I am a supporter.
Yeah, I want to get to the supporters first. I apologize for that.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know, uh, as a panelist, do we get to ask questions of each of the people that are reporting? At what point does that happen?
Uh, you'll be able to, uh, you, are you a supporter or, or objector?
I am an objector.
You'll be able to ask questions of the applicant once we get to you.
Okay, thank you.
But let's, uh, let's go to the supporters, um. Uh, I think it was, uh, Shanna was speaking.
Yes, this is Shauna. Um, hello, my name is Shauna. I am a resident of the Seventh Ward.
Could you, could you state your, your full name and address, please?
Yeah, Shauna Landhart. My address is seventy-seven fifty-six South Essex. Apartment one, six, oh, six, four, nine.
I'm so sorry. This is the court footer. There's some background. It's other people that aren't speaking can mute. That'd be great.
Okay, uh, before you, uh, start speaking, uh, could, do you swear or, oh, could you, you know what, state your name and address again? You, you were breaking up.
Yes, Shauna Landhart. My address is seventy-seven fifty-six South Essex. E S S E X Avenue Apartment One, Chicago, Illinois, six oh, six, four, nine.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Uh, okay, go ahead and, uh, please express your support.
Um, I am in full support. I am a millennial, twenty-five years old, and I actually live. Really right around the corner from the proposed, uh, establishment. And I think the owner said it earlier, I do not know this guy or anything like that. But, um, I'm not going up north anymore. I should not have to go downtown or up north just to get. Simple services like a massage, my nails done, my hair done. Me, my homegirls, my homeboys, we should not have to travel outside of our neighborhood. As I stated before, this is essentially right around the corner from me. And just like the man said and a few other people over here said, there's literally nothing on Seventy-Fifth. So if somebody is coming in trying to propose a successful business that will help the community, give jobs. Give some type of getaway for people over here to get away from already the drama and chaos that's over here. Why would anybody object? I am in full support once again. And I feel as if somebody like myself, young college student, if I want to open up a business. In my neighborhood as a black woman, I'm going to be persecuted just like as this man was on this line. And honestly, I don't want to do that. So somebody like myself might go back to my home state, Houston, Texas. Or to Indiana to open up a business. If this is the hurdles you have to jump through in Chicago. To open up a business as a black person. So I hope the board, the, the zoning board of appeals, I hope you guys approve this. For people like myself, the majority of the neighborhood who look like me, are of my age. And come from where I've come from, who are in support of this establishment.
Okay, uh, thank you. Are there any other supporters? I can, hold on, we've got somebody raising their hand. Um, I'm going to promote to a panelist. Uh, alright, we, we just promoted Natalie Perkins, um. Are you here in objection or support?
I'm in objection.
Okay, okay, great. Well, we, 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 we will get, uh, to all the objectors. Last, last call for, uh, for supporters. Um, if there is any other supporters. Please, uh, raise your hand and, and, uh, we'll, we'll swear you in so you can express your support. Okay, hearing none, um, we've got a lot of objectors here, uh. Let's see here.
Can I state for the record, I didn't know about bringing supporters. I have a lot of supporters. And I don't mind petitioning the, the neighborhood to be in support of the spa. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Had I known, I would have had a, a lot of supporters on the line today.
Okay, um, so. Any, anyone who wants to express, who wants to go first here? Uh, I'll just, I'll just call a name out, uh, Janice.
Okay, so I'd like to start by, uh.
First, first, uh, please, um, state your name and address, please, so I can swear you in.
My name is Janice Jones and I live about a block. Uh, block, maybe a block and a half away from this, um, property.
Sure, what, what's, what's your address?
Well, I like to use my P O box, four nine zero, one four nine, Chicago, Illinois, six zero, six, four, nine. Which is also right around the corner from this facility.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, so I wanted to ask questions because I hear, um, uh, I wanted to start with the owner. And I wanted to be clear who the owner is of this property. So can, um. Is it Derek Morel? Are you the owner of this property?
Yes, ma'am. I'm the owner of the business and I'm the owner, I'm the purchaser of the building itself.
Okay, and so I heard you say, I heard you say that you were having all of these meetings with your workers. And so I was wondering if you had like a board or a management, uh, type of meetings or whatever because. When I hear your, when I'm listening to what you're reporting, when it comes to your promoter, you're unaware of anything that's going on. You're unaware of the flower, uh, flyers that's going on. That's what I heard you say. Um, you also reported that when it came to, um, you know, you don't know anything about the, uh, notices of. Uh, the cease and desist notice, right? So I want to know, like, how does it work? Are you meeting with your people to ensure that you're knowledgeable of these things as a business owner? To know what's going on with your business? How does that work?
Hold on, uh, let me address her questions real quick for one second, Janelle. My answer to your question.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Here's my answers to your questions, if you had. Um, as for me being forward with the business itself, everything is on hold. Because of the hearing that we're in today. I applied for the license in March. And I didn't get the scheduled hearing until currently now in October, which made me stop the meetings. And stop moving forward with anything. As far as the letters of cease and desist, I haven't put a mailbox out there. Because we aren't allowed to operate. So I need to cut in a mailbox into the brick wall. So the mail can be placed into our establishment. I can't do any of that until I'm approved to operate. And then approved to do remodeling. So as for me having a board. That is not established yet because we don't have the authority to move forward as of yet.
Okay, so I, okay, that's fine. I was thinking of maybe like a planning board, like people that you. Come together and decide how you guys are going to move forward, like some kind of business plan, like how you guys are going to proceed with these sorts of things. The second question I want to ask you is, uh, I, you made the comment that you had boarded this place up and that you have security cameras out there. Can I ask you, when did the board up? When did you do the board up?
Uh, the board up is happening actually this weekend. I just discovered that the windows was vandalized. On, on, I was at a wedding, so it was about a week and a half ago. I had to make sure that we won't be in violations for boarding up the windows, looking as if we're working on the place. Once I got told that it's, it's a good to go, it won't be in violation, somebody broke your window. I authorized because I'm not, I'm a business owner. So I do snow removal, landscaping and construction. So I authorized my, my, one of my workers to go there and board up the window, which is he, which he's doing tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. And then you also mentioned about the security camera. When did that go up?
Uh, the security camera went up the very next day after the place was broken into. Um, it's one in the front, one in the back and one in the inside. The front can see the entire alley. Um, behind the building into the street. And, uh, the one in the front can see directly across the street, all the way to the corner. And partially past that daycare that's in front of me. And recently somebody's car about two months ago was broken into. But by me having my advertisement banner up, she wasn't able to see who actually broke into her car. She seen the timestamp of the car being there and then I let her know the timestamp of the, the car leaving. So that shows that I'm willing to work with the community when something happens to them. And I'm also willing to work with the police when something happens in our neighborhood, just like it happened with that postal worker that was robbed. And I offered the FBI my footage. They told me that it was not necessary because it wasn't in the direction of my camera.
Okay.
Right, uh, Janice, did you have any other, uh, questions?
Actually, I have, uh, two more. I wanted to know, have he considered having, um, uh, a business like this? In his neighborhood, like near his house where he lives?
I live in your neighborhood. I live down the street. I live literally by the Save-A-Lot on Stony Island.
That is not down the street.
It takes me five minutes to get there. And yes, I considered. It takes me five minutes to get there. And yes, I considered opening it there, but I was fortunate enough to purchase that building at that location at a reasonable price. When I invest, I invest where I can not rent, but, but buy. So what, what I want you guys to understand is I'm here for the long haul. Whether I allow, whether I'm allowed to open a barber shop, I can put my landscaping there. But my landscaping doesn't help your area property taxes. It doesn't give jobs to the community. It doesn't provide a service for the initial community right there in that area. Because we're branching out and I even do the snow removal for the Alderman's location over there on Ninety-Fifth. That whole strip, I remove the snow. I have fifty underprivileged, diverse, black individuals working for me that I mentor and pay a high rate, twenty-five dollars an hour to remove snow. I am a very structured and helpful business person for the community. I'm not looking to hurt you guys.
But I'm just looking at your efforts so far and it causes me, uh, I'm concerned about the management, how this is working or how this is unfolding. So uh, the last thing I wanted to ask is um, you stated that it was, when you look at that place over there that you just bought, when you look at the block, you're directly across the street from a daycare and a senior's living facility and down the street from a school. Can you, can you tell me how you feel that it is appropriate to entertain at that place of a large mass of people? How do you feel, uh, I don't understand how that property can number one um uh handle a large mass of people? How do you figure it with the area?
I think we're mistaken on what the property is for. The property is appointment only and it's not for a large man. We only have seven barbers, one dread tech, a nail technician and a masseuse, which only allows us twelve visitors per time. So it's
In your statement earlier, you referred to a large mass of people. So I'm just saying
My statement earlier was about promoters following.
We can't hear you right now, Mr. Morell.
Can you hear me now?
When you are moving around, you
Yeah, you might want to stop moving around because you're, you're coming in and out.
My, my, my talk about the la- large mass of people was in regards to the promoter and the group of people that he brings to a new business. It was not as if I'm gonna, I can't hope, I can't service no more than fifteen people at a time. So it won't be a large group. It's a appointment only. You can't get in, it's no walk-ins. You can't get in without an appointment.
Okay, this is the last question, I promise. Um, why you didn't consult with the community? Why didn't you consult with us? I'm literally block away. Why didn't you consult with us to ask us what kind of business we want in this community? Your business basically does not lie, it's not a good fit with the goal that we have for South Shore.
Cause my goal is different from your goal.
Residents that live here.
I live in South Shore. We're from a different
Everybody stop, everybody stop, everybody stop right now.
I'm talking to the owner.
Everybody stop right now, okay? When the objector is asking questions of the applicant, we're gonna let those two talk. Nobody else is gonna jump in. Okay, we're gonna let everybody talk and finish before somebody else speaks. I'm not gonna allow this to, you know, this is not gonna be chaos. So Janice, Janice was speaking. You can continue.
Yeah, basically, I'm just asking, you know, to consider another place. Uh, when I was speaking on I, you guys say you live in the area, but you're on Stony Island, which is a block away. And uh, S is, is, you know, not, is about, what, maybe So all I'm saying is, is that we weren't consulted. We're business, we're homeowners, we're business owners too. And we were never consulted about what you wanted to bring to our community. You never got our input. And your business, sir, I'm not trying to be, your business is not does not fit with that corner. It does not fit in that location. I'll, I'll finish with that. Please reconsider somewhere else. It's not even wanted. It's not even
Can I address your last que, can I address last statement?
Yes, sir.
As for me consulting with the community, I spoke to everyone that stood outside. I walked through that neighborhood. Everyone asked me, what is your intentions on building? I told them, they said, we love it. We're looking forward to having you there. We can't wait till you open. As for me understanding that everybody in the neighborhood won't be in agreeance. But here's my thing, you have three other barber shops six blocks down in the same community. And you have nail techs right there on, on um, which is your ward, right there on uh Ninety-Fifth and Jeffrey. In your community, in your ward. And they're welcome. So you saying that I'm not welcome when I asked the community and I wanted to go door to door to every resident. But when I was instructed, when I was instructed by the board that it had to go, the letters had to go out to the owners of the property, which was not the people at the location. You can't give the letters, because my intentions was to hand deliver each letter to each resident and knock on the door to speak to them to let them know what my intentions was in the community. But they said that is not the way you deliver the letters. The letters go to the property owners and most of your property owners in that community don't live in that community.
Well, sir, I lived in the community. I am a property owner in the community and I live right down the street and I never got anything from you or your establishment. And with that being said, I'm um I'm just gonna, um, oh, I wanted to ask, you said to go up and you guys are bringing services that we would nor- normally get on this side of town or whatever, but you've already mentioned the nail techs and the barber shops and we have plenty of those.
I was gonna, in reference to the masseuse up north.
Well, I'm gonna tell, I'm gonna, I want to talk, ask you about your masseuse. Is this like therapeutic massage or something? To what capacity are they licensed as a masseuse? Right? Cause if we're gonna talk about
Yes, we can, we can talk about the masseuse. The masseuse is specialized in um lava stones for um rehab, rehabilitation. She has sport athletes as some clients. Um, she's also specialized in deep tissue massages. There is no underplay involved. It is appointment only. You only have a set time. And it is uh legit massage, masseuse, as you would have up north when you go in the loop area. Um, like the, the Alderman spoke upon, we spent, he spoke upon years ago about all the money that's spent in the loop area and all the rehab and all the buildups and the big time investors. Well, us small time investors want to bring back our community and we're not waiting on the big time investors to work on the US Steel location from overseas that doesn't, he, he, he has plans for US Steel that's up the street that used to be operational, that's closed down for a foreigner to come in from overseas to revamp that and turn that whole place into a lakefront commodity. Our people won't be able to afford it.
But is that the only business that our people can bring to the community? Is that all that we have to off? Is that all we have to offer? We have impressionable youths. We're trying to build families. You talk about your family, but you're keeping it away from your kids. Don't bring it in our community. Please.
My, my kids work here, but to answer your statement, that is not the only piece of property I plan on buying on Seventy-Fifth. I have multiple businesses.
Okay, alright, but I, I want to stay focused on this property. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of going, we're, we're we're going in circles here a little bit. I, I've, I've heard the objection. Um, and I, uh, you've, you've responded, uh, Mr., Mr. Merrill, I I'd, I'd like to move to uh another um ob- objector if we can.
Okay, so I was merely asking a question, but I did not, I had a statement as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so um, I just wanted to say that I am a resident of South Shore, of the South Shore community and business owner. My whole family has been a resident and have operated businesses in South Shore for over fifty years. And we've seen the changes. We've seen the good, the bad and the ugly. We have worked diligently to bring peace to that corner and have endured many struggles. While we have made strides, we remain vigilant to keep our community and its people safe. Our goal has always been to create a South Shore that's vibrant, self-sustaining, family-oriented, a community where all of its residents feel safe. We strongly object to the rezoning of this property. Um, and here's, here's our reasoning. Um, community perception of, commu- a community's perception affects our quality of life. Where fear of crime exists, the quality of life drops. Residents tend to stay isolated in their homes. This is a major hindrance to the efforts that we have made to reduce crime. We want our neighbors to feel safe, children to play outside, residents to walk to the store, wo- work or jog in the park. We want our families to stay in the community. We want new families to come, move into the community. And we want those that have left to not be afraid to come back. The implu- the implementations of this type of business moving into a community ignites fear. We've already, we're already starting to see what is happening up there. The gunshots, you coming in with armed security, because you anticipate that there's going to be trouble. The type of bi- this type of business does not align with our goal, as I stated before. The community has, was never consulted whether or not this business in a good fit. It doesn't have the characteristics um of our community. It does not fit with that.
We are not in the same community.
Hold up, hold, hold up, hold up. Turn to speak. This is not your turn to speak.
I just want to let you know that.
This type of behavior, this, this is an example of what we are to expect his workers and his affiliates or whatever, we definitely don't need it. So this location is known with the city of Chicago. It's no hotspot. It's still with climate community strategically, working with the police at this location crimes. Things have simmered down, but it remains a work in progress. This location is one block from, down the street from the school across the street from a daycare and a senior living facility. It is with great prayers, okay? The board will not hear requests.
This is, this is the quarter quarter. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, is she just breaking up for me or is it everybody?
No, she's breaking up for everybody.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just say this. It is with great prayers application that the zoning board of appeals will not only hear this request, but will deny the rezoning of this property for the use of a gentleman's club or any other business that does, that does not bring value to our community. This is not the type of business that fits well with what we're trying to do over here. I can't speak for S's or Stony Island, but I can't speak for South, this South Shore area here, this part of where I live.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we are going to move to the next objector. No, uh, everybody stop. We're gonna move to the next objector. And when uh we get through the objectors, we will go back to the applicant and his supporters, okay? But we're gonna get through the objection, objections first. Otherwise, too much back and forth. Uh, but I do see that Alderman Mitchell wants to speak, so please uh proceed, Alderman Mitchell.
Commissioner, if you don't mind, we have both the captain of the fourth district and the commander of the third online to get them back into the, to the street. Can we have them go next?
Yes. Are they, are they, uh, are they panelists right now or do we need to promote them?
Yes, Steve Carroll is a panelist and I saw that uh Commander Watkins was as well.
Okay, great. Um, let's, let's go with uh, with Mr. Carroll next. Uh, and what I want to say too is we've, we've heard a, a lot um from our first objector. And uh, it's really about quality of quantity. If you agree with the prior objector, then you can just say that you agree with the prior objector. I, I don't need a duplicate of what we just heard, okay? If you, if you agree with the objections that have already happened, that come before you, then you can say that. And if you have something new to add, then add that. But I don't need a repeat of an objection. And with that, uh, please, everybody, please mute yourself. Let's go to Mr. Carroll next.
You know, I respectfully defer to uh the commander of the third district.
Okay, let's go, let's go to the commander.
Hello?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, guys. I'm in and out of meetings right now. So what I'm, what I'm going to actually do, I'm, I'm, I'm going to actually have my officers, my business officers, Officer Rivera and Officer Jackson to discuss some reason why we are objecting and the problems we're having with this location. Officer Jackson, you on?
I am, I am commander, thank you.
Okay, Officer Jackson, could you state your name and role, please?
Uh, my name is Officer Jackson. Located at seventy forty South um Cottage Grove, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three seven.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Um, I agree with everything that the Alderman said previously and the last caller. Um, but some of our concerns is that uh if he um, if Mr. Morell is not aware of what's happening in the evening, like uh with the strip parties that we were brought uh to our attention. Moving forward, how will we know that he's not aware of other parties that's happening later?
That was a qu- question directed to me, correct, uh, officer?
Okay, to answer your question, the reason I, I'm not aware of a plugger, as I stated before, is that I don't have paid promotion going on right now. If somebody decides to promote my business, I can't stop that if somebody that I know, know I'm opening a business and decides to advertise it on, on my business behalf. My question to you is, do you have actual reports recorded for my establishment or are you talking in reference to what potentially might happen?
No, we, we were brought, uh, this was brought to our attention from, through the community and that you guys had a a party that
So you actually had reports on actual days that it was a disturbance, unrest uh, or any notion that was going on at my establishment that I can come obtain and, and see for myself?
I do not right now.
So right now, you just have reports of concerned citizens in the neighborhood that is against my establishment opener.
Yes, stating that you had a stripper party there um, the night.
From a flyer that they seen online. That, did anybody say they witnessed or entered
Alright. I'm sorry, who's, who's speaking right now?
Uh, this is Captain, do, do we have a log for the cause of service there?
Cause you have the report of, that I made for the inspector and you have the break-in report. Other than that, there was never an officer called out to my establishment. Somebody broke in when I first came in there, putting equi- uh barber equipment in and somebody, um, the inspector came out, which I didn't know he was a city inspector and yanked on the door and set off the alarm, which I dialed nine-one-one and have a report for that. Outside of that, I would love to know any other reports for my establishment.
Also just want to add, I'm sorry, um, with the
Who's, who's speaking?
I do apologize.
Okay, this is not, uh, look, this is not your time to speak and I'm gonna get to you. I promise you, I will get to you. I will get to everybody. Everybody's gonna get their turn, I promise. But this is not your turn to, to jump in. Um, we're, we're, we're gonna do this in an orderly fashion, otherwise, we're gonna be here on this one case all day.
Chairman of the board, I would like to state in fact that if they were prepared to bring allegations on my establishment, they would have had the reports a- and, and the things ready that they needed on hand. On my establishment, they would have had the reports a- and, and the things ready that they needed on hand. This is all hearsay from people that don't want it. And as I'm, I want to petition the board to allow me time to go in the community. And get them to sign a petition saying whether they're for it or against it. And I'm willing to respect what the community feels. If the community is against, if majority of the community is against my establishment. Opening in their community, I'm willing to turn my establishment into an office for my landscape. So, right now, we're, we're dealing with, I know it doesn't seem like it's a feud. Because you have twenty or thirty people objecting, but twenty or thirty people doesn't represent the seventh ward district. And so if I'm willing to go door to door to every door in that community. And get a petition signed and, and enter in a record saying that whether they're for or against, and majority is against. Then I give this board in the objectives, my word, I will turn that building into something else. Hello? Because right now, we just have supporters of the alderman. Which if he only brought thirty to a meeting, that's, that's not a good support base. But if we only have the alderman supporter to object, then I should be allowed to get the people that's for.
Mr. Morel?
Yes.
Hey, this Officer Jackson again, as um, as of March, um, we've had twenty calls for service in that area.
And I can pick those calls up?
Yeah, the, the twenty tw- calls on some different things.
O- officer, this is tech support. I think you're in close proximity of another person who's in the meeting. So we're getting feedback.
Back when you, when you talk.
I'm sorry, I was, I moved to another role. Yeah, I was just, uh. Uh, we stayed that he had twenty calls for service, um, for different um, reasons over the last few months.
And may I come pick those records up?
Yes.
Okay. And my last question for the officer, cause I believe he was done with his statement. He said he agreed with the alderman and the first objector.
What, Officer, were you, were, were, were you, were you finished with, with your objection?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, you can, you can, you can ask your question, Mr. Morel.
This, this is my final uh, question for you, officer. Uh, would a running establishment with security cameras help prevent crime? Or do closed establishments that can't see crimes happening, give blind spots to the criminals? Help increase crime?
I, I think that uh, the cooperation of the business owner will help prevent crime, of course.
So. You have more closed down locations on Seventy Fifth in, in that area than you have active. My location will actually help prevent crime. And as they stated earlier, yes, I have armed security because if you live and be in that community. You have individuals hanging on the corner non-stop, twenty-four seven at that area. Which I'm trying to protect the people that patronize my area. Not in fear of the people inside being serviced, but the people outside that does harm. Directly down is a restaurant that three individuals were shot and one was killed for retaliation. I have to protect the people that patronize at my area. I'm not looking to harm this community.
Okay, uh, let's go to the next um, objector was. As, as far as the, the police department is, has everybody spoken that wanted to speak?
Sergeant Carroll from the fourth district.
Sergeant Carroll, did, did you wanna, did you have anything to add to what's already been said?
Yeah, I just have a few things that I'll go over with you guys.
Okay. Oh, uh, c- could you state your name and role, please?
Sergeant Carroll, fourth district, sergeant DCO team, district coordinating officers.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Proceed.
Uh, one of the things that I would just like to bring up, uh, is that basically all we can go off of, because this is a business is officially, it is not open. All we can go off of is the uh, citations that were issued as well as the cease and desist orders. Um, both of which show that the um, the owner was operating outside the scope of his license. Um, the cease and desist order suggests drinking, strippers, as well as um. Um, public place of amusement violations, all of which are a very big deal to the third and the fourth district. Uh, I'd like to let you guys know essentially what happens with these places in our experience when they, when they do violate these type of. These type of uh, licenses is they turn into a, a, a social club or a party location or a venue location. Uh, at this time, it's one of the, one of the, one of our main concerns in the city of Chicago are these. Party locations due to the uptick in violence that comes along with them. Uh, the things that it brings to the neighborhood are, are um. Uh, increased drinking, increased violence, um, all the things that we're looking to avoid. So, I, I appreciate everything that the owner said. Uh, however, all we can go off of is the facts and the facts are that there are cease and desist, there are violations issued. Um, the other thing that I would talk to him about is, is with his, he brings up all of his um, video cameras and all that stuff. Two things I would like to know from him directly is, are those video cameras tied into OEMC? Was he ever, did he ever approach the third district about getting uh, those cameras tied in so that. So that uh, it shows a working relationship with the Chicago Police Department? I'd also like to know if he uh, is open to a plan of operations, if this does move forward. Um, if we can discuss those types of things with him or sit down with CPD, the third and the fourth district. If he would sit down and discuss those issues with us in person.
Mr. Merrill?
Yes, I'm here, I'm just waiting on the uh, the background.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, again, if, if it's not your turn to speak, please, please stay muted, Mr. Merrill, uh, uh, please respond.
Uh, first, I wanna open up with the statement that he said he, we can only work off the facts. Those are not facts, those are statements from the community. And as far as the cease and desist, if you get a call from anybody, but nobody came out to actually say yes. When I got a call this day and came out, this individual was operating and doing this at this location. Everything right now is he say from a plug. Um, as far as my cameras being um, tapped into the Chicago Police Department. Once I'm operational, I will forever be a supporter. Because I have nothing but friends and family and I will tap my cameras into the Chicago Police Department. Um, the person that's responsible for my um, entertainment works for your district. Uh, I have family members in your district. Uh, I will not name them, for I don't want anything to happen. In regards to them being in support of me, but I am very supported through your police district. As for my order, as for my operation time, my operation time is um, Sunday through Monday. Eleven and six and um, Tuesday through Saturday, um, ten to uh, seven. I have no late hours. So there won't be any ruckus or anything else of that nature. I don't have an alcohol license. I don't serve or pertain in alcohol. Being um, at my establishment whatsoever. So whatever is already existing as far as crime. And the atmosphere in the neighborhood, my intentions is to make it better. I don't, my business don't increase crime. It is not set up to increase crime. Getting a haircut doesn't welcome criminal activities. It actually prevents criminal activity from them having to travel outside of their neighborhood. Which they might be into it with somebody in another neighborhood, trying to go that far to get a haircut. It's not a barbershop in that area for a six to seven block radius. And that's going down Seventy Fifth. As far as going as far to Ninety Fifth, you don't see a barber shop in that area. From straight down to Ninety Fifth at all. You don't see one going straight down to Seventy First until you get to Jeffrey at all. So me bringing a barber shop where they can actually get their haircut and not go into rival communities helps the crime. So I'm not looking to hurt and yes, I will build a public relationship as I already have with officers.
Okay, so the only thing I'm gonna add is that, number one, um, I believe he. The cease and desist order was affixed to the building. I believe you guys even have a photograph of that. Um, if you can, if you can show them that it was affixed to the building of his, of, of his property. Um, the other thing would be, uh, again, all I can go off of is what I see. And what I, and what is written. So, the, the evidence showed that he was holding illegal parties. He was, he was issued violations for that. He was issued cease and desist orders for that. Um, in that thing.
Orders on my property. That, that is a, that is a notarized placard given to me by the board to put in the window to let the community know. My intentions on what I'm bringing to the property. That I was told to put into the window so public access can see as part of me getting a hearing today. That's what I had to do.
Yeah, for the, for the record, I, I don't believe we have a photo of a cease and desist order on the uh, on the building. If I'm wrong.
Okay.
Somebody will, 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 will let me know, but I, I don't believe we have that.
Okay, well, either way, the, the cease and desist orders have now, he's now got the cease and desist orders via email uh, from this place. So he understands the, he understands the uh, allegations that were issued against him. All I can say is that I can go off of the cease and desist. I've not seen a bit, I've not seen a barber shop operate out there. All I can see is what's on this flyer. And what's on this flyer is that they're hosting strippers, they're, they're charging to get in, they're violating the PPA license. They are operating tobacco uh, for hookah, uh, all of these things which he says he's not aware of. However, there's, there's the, there's the advertisement for it. So based off of that, the fourth district does not want to support. And we would like to object to this man receiving any type of license for this activity.
Thank you, Sergeant Carroll. Um, one, one question uh, that I have for you. Is this address in the third district or the fourth district?
This is a border, this is a border district, so uh, Seventy Fifth Street, uh, the north side of the street is the third district. The south side of the street is the fourth district, which is why both of us are here, because the uh, actual place affects. Affects the actual Seventy Fifth Street affects both of us.
I, I see, I, I, I appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification. Okay.
And I would like to close with officer, I don't have, I just have a statement, not a question.
Um, he. Well, here you, let's, uh, Mr. Morel, let's, let's, let's leave your statement until we get to the end, because you're, you're gonna get the last word. Uh, so, so let's, let's just keep, let's keep this moving. Um, okay, now as far as uh, the, 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 the police department, have we gone through? Uh, everyone who had an objection from the police department? Okay, hearing nothing more, I'm gonna go to the next objector. Uh, that I see, which I believe is Veronica Kyle.
Hello, hello everyone, um, I'm Veronica Kyle.
Could you state your, your name and address, please?
Yes, Veronica Kyle, I live in the twenty-six hundred block of East Seventy Fourth Place. I live exactly um, less than two hundred steps um, away from the establishment, maybe two fifty.
Do, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Absolutely, yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed and i- I'm sure you've heard me say it already, but we've heard a lot of objections already. If you agree with the prior objectors, you can say that. If you have something additional to add, then add it. But I don't need repetitive objections, it's really not helpful.
Um, let me say, yes, I agree with the prior objectives and I also wanna say, uh, all due respect to Alderman Mitchell. I'm not here, um, from his request. I actually received a postcard from your hearing board that showed up in my mail. And it, it told us that we could come on the hearing and many of us, I know on the call, received that same card. So I just wanna put that out there to the um, the applicant. Um, I also wanna say, um, my history with that corner um, runs deep. I moved in this uh, area in two thousand and seven in this ward. Um, and many of us on this call, those two vacant lots, Mr. Morel. We turned them into what we thought would be peace gardens. Twenty-foot tables, potlucks, pumpkin carving, back-to-school giveaways, many of the things that you named. Within the course of two years, they became the drug haven hangout. We have had seven major shootings, five of them um, became homicides. We have watched our children and grandchildren have to be snatched up and run as bullets flew on that corner. And I wanna say to the young lady who's, I felt her passion of not wanting to have to travel so far to enjoy and have a good time. The problem with, with what has happened on that corner, police constantly being called. That's literally the alderman on this call, he knows, we bowed heads. He literally shut down the gardens, had the trees mowed down and moved a fire hydrant. Because the patrons, the people who live, homeowners, really started to feel so scared and so afraid. From all of the negative activity that was happening um, to our peace gardens. And, and thousands of dollars were invested by businesses as well as individuals to make those, that's kind of very nice. And it didn't happen. And so what you are, what you are hearing and what you are feeling is historical fear. Of the past and also to this point, we want to see something that is lifting up. Our community, our children deserve it, we as seniors deserve it. But those of us who have been traumatized by the violence of the corner of Seventy Fifth and Coles, we also deserve it. And every commander in the alderman on this, on this hall, the history that we have experienced, you have not. Neither have your business supporters and your attorneys. And in terms of getting the community's um, input. Please reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, the quarry and other places and let's have that conversation. Why don't you have that town hall with us? And I will assure you, I am a hundred percent um, positive. That people will say, this is not what we need on a corner one block from Powell School, right across from a daycare, a senior home. But for us, um, property owners as well, all due respect to you as a business owner. I wish you could sit down with the community and we could talk about something really positive happening. And finally, what I wanna say, if you have promoters working with you that are so disrespectful. That they would write these kind of pr- things, activities on your grand opening. That makes me even more extremely concerned that anybody would be able to advertise for my business, promote that. On social media, a flyer, and I don't know anything about it and none of these activities are gonna take place. So I want to say, I am passionately objecting to this type of business. I did not say you're not bring a business, but this one right here, the last thing I think black people have any problem finding is a place to get a haircut. And get their nails done. And with that, I just wanna uh, file my public objection.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kyle. Um, we're gonna go to the next objector.
So no longer address the objectors?
Oh, uh, it, well, do you, it, if you have a question for her, then you can, then you can ask a question. If you have a statement, let's save it until the end.
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I would like to know, for the first question, I would like to know when is the town hall meeting? Um, next meeting, so I can attend. Um, the next question I have is, um, would they object to me revisiting? And planting the garden free of charge for the community? And the last question is, what is it about my barber shop, nail shop, massage? You feel drives down or bring criminal activity into your community?
Let me just say this, in terms of having a meeting, I, I suggested that you reach out to the chamber, that those are, that's the office that handles the businesses. Let me just say this, in terms of having a meeting, I I suggested that you reach out to the chamber, that those are, that's the office that handles the businesses. And ask for a meeting, they will advertise and we will show up. Or reach out to the Ottoman's office, ask for a meeting, they will advertise and we will show up, whether it's at Powell School or the Chamber Office, that's one thing. Secondly, um, this isn't about you putting in a garden. We could go back and plant those flowers right now, and quite frankly, that happened over and over again. It's about the activity that happens on that corner. That is the bang bang shoot them up corner right now. One of them in South Shore, period. Um, like you said, you need armed guards, it's not even safe to go there. If that young lady Shauna or somebody got hurt there, I would feel devastated because that is what happens on that corner. Does that break my heart? Absolutely. I live walking distance from it. And the last thing I wanna say to you is, this really isn't about. What positive things you can invest in a community, because we know good money and bad money can do good things to a community. We don't need another school, uh, back giveaway, any of those things, they're all sound wonderful. At the same time. Come and talk to the community. If you just spent any time in that community, you have talked too much on here about what you didn't know when you did not come, you didn't know this was going on. You hardly ever go there. All of those things make me personally as a resident and you as a business owner, very concerned. About your ability to be attentive and on point about making sure that what you say you're doing. Even though this flyer, and just for the record, I didn't go in your establishment, I haven't been, but I drive past it. The sign is hanging down, I saw the, the broken windows or whether they were bullet holes or bro- rocks. It in itself just made me sick to the stomach and it, it brought back trauma. I'm just trying to get you to understand, trauma, we are traumatized by that corner, and I'm owning that. Um, and I'm speaking to say that if you're not bringing anything soothing and 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 talking to the community about what they think they need. Like I said, I object, I don't wanna debate it. I'm just stating as a citizen and as a resident, long time. It is a lot of ill thoughts and memories um, about that corner. And um, just talking about it, just uh, uh, visualize, you know, seeing young men gunned down like animals. Over and over again on that corner, it is, is sickening.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's, let's go to the next objector, uh, which I believe is Sharon Lewis. Sharon Lewis, you're muted right now?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Sharon Lewis, and I live on seven, in the seventy three hundred block of South Shore Drive.
And do, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis, and I I know you've heard me say it, but please, uh, if you agree with the prior objectors, you can say that. If you have something new to add, then you can add it, but I really don't need repetitive objections.
Certainly, certainly. I do agree with the prior objectors. Uh, but what I'd like to bring to the table, which is new, is the fact of the primary school. Which is within close proximity of that location. And the fact that children have to move back and forth in front of not only that location. But also seventy fifth and uh, between Exchange. Um, and the school, I'm sorry, Exchange uh, Coles and the school. There are, there's extreme loitering. I was also a member of the gardens that used to be at that location. Uh, and was witness to the shootings, et cetera. So I think it's extremely important to take into consideration the daycare center as well as Adam Clayton Powell School. Which is there, and the people, the mothers, the children, uh, the babysitters who have to move back and forth. In front of that location. I'm very glad to hear that the owner is willing. To put something else there, namely his landscaping business. I would welcome that. I need landscaping. And people who are standing on that strip with nothing to do. Could be trained in horticulture and help to beautify the neighborhood. So I do object to his current business plan. But if he's thinking about bringing landscaping and giving jobs to people who are aimlessly standing around. So I can have my brothers do my lawn as opposed to someone else, I would appreciate that greatly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Merrill, do you have any questions for Ms. Lewis? If not, we'll save the comments for the end.
Yes, the same question is for each one that says the same thing. What about my business brings increased crime that everybody is alluding to? There's, nobody has stated what brings the crime. They're just stating that they don't want the crime that already exists. So if the crime that already exists in the community is there without my business, what about my business increases that?
Well, what I'd like to say in response to that is in deference to the people who live within. Close proximity of your location. Uh, as I stated, we were part of the gardens. That were at that location that were um, removed. Let me say removed, because there was a different vision for development at that location. Not sure what that vision is, but this is not the vision. Um, the reason being, the people who live within close proximity have witnessed what has gone on and you're not even open. Um, the fact of the matter is, when our gardens were there, there were activities going on. Uh, over which the police department obviously had no control. Those people who are still standing on those corners on, and the strip uh, along the fence, loitering. It's not gonna add to a peaceful, progressive situation uplifting the community. And if you have no idea that promoting is being done, activities are going on. And this is not a first just for your business, it's gone on along seventy fifth street for a while. But we really have a different vision, and if you're gonna do landscaping and give jobs to those men in the community. Train them so they're not aimlessly standing there, I'd appreciate that. But you're not even open and we're having negative activity.
And my final question for you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
If you had a garden with your vision there, that still brought the unwanted. People around where you had to shut it down. Anything that you put with your vision, according to what you're saying, will be desolated. By the unwanted activity that goes on, on that corner. But the difference between the garden and my building is, my cameras can report directly to the police district. And let them see the drug activity to get the evidence they need to get the individuals off the corner that you don't want there. But without anything there, they have no vision of what's going on. You get a call from the police station of drug activities, they have to get there, and by the time they respond, they're gone. My camera actually grabs the footage of the people selling drugs, doing criminal activity. And it helps them lock those individuals that's doing wrong up. To remove.
Well, we, we, we will campaign for the police department to put their cameras up. I was not aware that they don't have cameras, and I'm sure uh, I would have the strength and the breadth. Of all the community members in order to do that. But I hear what you're saying, but I do still object. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the next objector, which I see is Attorney Meredith Hammer.
Hi, this is Attorney Meredith Hammer. I live in the twenty three hundred block of East Eighty Third Street. Um, I do swear to tell the truth. And I just wanted to say I agree with the previous objector.
Brian, I believe you were talking and were muted if you were saying something.
Oh, I'm, yeah, thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Um, for uh, Ms. Ms. Hammer, I was, I was trying to swear you in. Could you uh, state your, your name and address, please?
This is Meredith Hammer. I live in the twenty three hundred block of East Eighty Third Street.
And do you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed, and again, uh, just.
Gonna say I agree with the previous objector.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, o- okay, uh. Let's go to the next objector, which I believe is Dorothy Jean Fields. If you could unmute, please.
Okay, is that okay?
Yes, uh, could you please state your name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Dorothy Jean Fields. My address is seventy eight thirty three South Coles Avenue. I'm probably the oldest, if not, well, one of the oldest, if not the oldest resident in the community on this call.
Do you, hold on, before you continue, uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, please proceed, and again, anything new, uh. We, we, we don't need a repetitive objection.
Okay, I do agree with the previous objectors, but I do have a, a few questions for uh, Mr. Morel. My first question is that although you say you're totally unaware of this flyer that was sent out under your. Um, uh, business name, my questions are. Uh, one, what in your opinion would be spa services excluding massage and nail and uh, haircut? And two, why would it show stripper show from eight PM until? If you're a business owner, anything as the previous uh, lady said. Um, anything that is sent out under your name without your uh, um, input. Indicates two things, either or, they don't respect you and they wanted to promote their own activities. Or you're not uh, uh, aware of what's going on with your business because you're a figurehead. And not an actual uh, owner. Also, if you are willing to uh, uh, just be a uh, um, barber shop. All right, then yes, we would, I would have no objection because it is necessary. But why would you be Pharaoh's gentleman's spa?
Is, is that, are you ready for me to answer?
Uh, those would be uh, my major concerns, yes, please answer.
As in regards to the social media, um, I'm not sure if, if a lot of you are aware of how social media work. You don't have, once you're. Ever, you can't control negative or positive advertisement on social media. For example, um, recently my cousin went viral for a childhood photo. And the photo caption, if you wore these shorts, you, you would already be considered somebody. And she didn't do the photo, somebody else did it. It has over five hundred thousand comments, over a hundred thousand shares. And it wasn't in her control, and it's out of her control. Um, as for me promoting spa, the reason why it's called a spa. Because it provides the nail and the massage portion and not just the barber shop portion. If it was just a barber shop, then I would have just called it Pharaoh's Barber Shop. But due to the fact that I found it, for me personally, when I go on vacation, I hate to go with my feet looking raggedy. And I love to relax because my job, as I said, landscaping is no removal, I get a lot of aches and pains. So I have to travel all the way up north to get a massage. And I have to sit in the um, ladies nail uh, spa area for hours. Waiting on the long line because it's so many ladies that get their nails done. So by me providing it at a barber shop, it allows the opportunity for a gentleman to get out of his haircut chair. And go get a pedicure or manicure at the same time if the window is available for him to do so. But when you have to leave a barber shop to go to a nail shop and wait a couple hours, then you had to drive forty five minutes all the way up north just to get a massage. It's strenuous. So I tried to accommodate all those into one. And make it feasible for gentlemen and ladies that get their haircut and get their feet done and. Enjoy a massage to be able to have one establishment to have that available to them. And we don't have that in our community. It's no massage place in the city of Chicago nearby. You have to go up all the way. Past downtown, up north, in order to get a massage. And I don't know anybody in our community that don't enjoy a actual relaxing massage. So why do we have to travel so far just to get one?
Okay, um, uh, oh.
Okay, so uh, Mr. Morel, as I said, I'm probably one of the oldest citizens on this line. I've lived here fifty one years. And uh, there were all types of uh, different businesses, et cetera, that were open. And uh, so I, I think one of the main objections to it is this flyer that you said you had no. Control or input in, but uh, as the previous uh, person suggested. Um, why don't you, uh, or as you suggested rather, why don't you uh, poll the community and actually see? What our objections would be. My main one is to the uh, advertisement that you said you had no control over. But it is under your uh, uh, name, therefore you are held accountable for it. And it does show stripper show eight PM until. And that to me does not promote for a family oriented community.
And yes, ma'am, I will um, get with the ultimate to see the next and uh, community chalmers over there on seventy first. To see the next town hall meeting to address the town in regards to my establishment. As for strippers, there will never be strippers in my establishment. As for me being open late, I will never be open late at my establishment. As for alcohol, there will never be alcohol at my establishment. I can't control social media presence. I can't. It's a lot of things on social media that I disagree with, that I wish social media wouldn't put up. But unfortunately, it's not in my control, nor is somebody doing ill promotions. On my company's behalf that I didn't ask for.
Okay, all right, let's, let's, let's move to the, to the next um, ob- objector. Um, which it looks like it is, um, is, is Veronica Kyle, is that, is that an objector?
I am, but I already spoke. I just wanna say this to the, of the gentleman who wants to do this. As far as massage in our community, there are several places that give nice massages, they're licensed, they're great. And again, come to the town hall, I, I'd love to see those owners there. Also, you might wanna visit, and you don't have to go up north to. Um, next man up on forty seventh street, an amazing black owned spa. High a woman, glad you could look through and see everything that's going on. Barber shop, nails, massage, has herbs, herbal therapy, all of that. Go visit, go look.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, all right, oh, let's, 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 let's stop, let's, uh, I, I did not mean to go to an objector that's already spoken. I, I do wanna get to the people who haven't spoken. If you've already spoken, you're, you've had your time, we're gonna move on to the next objector, uh, which now looks to be Melanie Campbell.
Good morning, can you hear me?
I can, uh, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Melanie Campbell. I live on the seventy four hundred block of Coles, and actually.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Only something new, okay? We've been going at this for a couple hours now, I just need something new. We've heard a lot of objections. If you have an agreement, you can say you agree.
Okay, at this point, I do agree because um, someone just mentioned uh, some area of massage and nail. massage and nail places that I was going to add. But I object, but I wish to have Mr. Morel come to a town meeting and speak with the people.
And we've heard that, we've heard that, and he said that he would. So, Mr. Morel, do you want to ask the same questions of this witness?
My, my only thing, again, it, it sounds great that it's something on Forty-seventh, but it's not in the community where we're at. I wasn't aware because I live in the community that you guys live in.
A question, though, for the, for this, for this objector. I, statements, you, you're gonna get the last.
My question is, my question is, if you're for that one and you're promoting that one, why are you against this one?
Because of the area that has a history of loitering and interacting in many negative ways with businesses that do not promote peaceful activity. And for that reason, I have a strong objection.
And my final question is, what is the unpeaceful activity you insinuating on? And do you believe that without me being there, as you stated yourself, the loitering will stop?
I cannot speak to whether the loitering will stop, but just, I understand your position about the social media flyer. But the fact that it is already out of control because someone has not notified you and who would have access to promote something like this and get in your business without you knowing about it says that something is not being communicated properly.
Well, you said you can attest to the loitering, not.
I can attest to the loitering that I see on a regular basis.
And so is there without me being there at all?
Correct.
Okay. Let's go to, are there, are there any objectors left that haven't spoken? If you're an objector that has not spoken, you can unmute and, and announce your presence.
Hi, my name is Natalie Perkins.
Hi, Natalie. Can, can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Natalie Perkins. My address is seventy-three twenty-one South Shore Drive.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, anything new, please feel free to add.
I had one question of Mr. Morel.
Okay.
He didn't answer it directly. He said that he has, he's going to have massage there. Is this a clinical licensed massage therapist? Or is this a pleasure therapist, somebody who just, like you said, does lava, does this, does that? So this is somebody who would be licensed, clinically licensed?
Yes, ma'am. It will be a clinically licensed. All my, all my workers in the shop are completely licensed for any activity that they do. The only person that won't be licensed is the dread tech because she doesn't need a license to do natural hair. But the masseuse, the nail tech, the, the barbers, everybody will be fully licensed. You can't be hired at my establishment without, without being fully licensed. And I'm sorry that future businesses leave the impression of a, a pleasure spa or whatever might be floating around and, and some people's idea of what my place is. But you've not given me an opportunity to show you that it's not. Everybody has an assumption that it, it already is without it even being open.
Also, my comment is about your social media. It's a little bit misleading. If somebody put up something about your business that you didn't like on social media, you could refute that. You could say this does not happen. So I haven't heard you say that. All you've said is, I can't do anything.
If you, if you heard me, um, when it was brought to my attention by the Alderman, this is the first time I'm seeing this. So once I get off of here, I will send a report to Facebook. But I have sent several reports to Facebook for fraud advertisement of services provided by contractors.
But we're not talking about that, sir. I'm sorry to interrupt. We're not talking about that.
What I'm saying is, I can send a report now that I know it exists. But at the end of the day, it's up to social media to actually enforce the report that I sent. It's not a guarantee that I send a report and they're gonna.
I'm not talking about a report. I'm talking about if somebody were doing that and you had complaints or people were, people did not feel this was the right thing, your social media could counteract that if you'd like. And also, you did state that this was maybe somebody that you are friends with or worked with and just reached out to him.
The only one I spoke to in regards to promotion, so, um, anybody else might have heard of a spa being opened under me and might have wanted to promote, I'm not sure, but I am gonna address future promotions of making sure my actual vision is the only thing being promoted and not their vision of what they want to use to entice people to come out.
And you also said something about the gardens that were there. The gardens were viable. It's not that they were not viable, but we needed support from our alderperson at the time. It takes a lot to do a community garden. Those were beautiful viable spaces that we invited people in. We didn't have a fence. So we needed the support. It wasn't that, you know, something's gonna happen there anyway.
No, that wasn't, my statement was me helping bring back that garden and provide my services. Cause she talked about how costly it was to actually put it there and how the, the loitering and the, and the hunt hanging around destroyed something that was great for the community. So my offer was to bring, help bring that back to the community and, and, and make it more structural to where it's, it's better for the community.
My last question is, you said that you did polling of people in the neighborhood? And what was the radius of the polling? Was it just on the immediate street? Or did you go out to neighborhoods like Kyle's and Ms. Lewis's and mine? Did you walk down the street? Did you, I mean?
My statement to the board was, I'm willing to go around to the neighborhood to do a polling. And if the neighborhood, majority of the neighborhood are against the barber shop, then I will change it to another business aspect because as I stated before, I'm buying the building, not renting a space to, to host a business in a space. So if the hearing allows me to get the entire community voice and not just the voice of thirty or forty, because we, we, we all know the community is of a thousand. So this is merely a, a small percentage of the community in representation. And so if the community actually feels that my location of business is not wanted, then I will respect the community's decision and turn my building into something else. But I, I want to be clear. My business vision isn't gonna be let the community tell me what to invest in. So whether it's a barber shop or a restaurant or a activity center or a, a, a shelf, a, a food pantry or, or whatever, it's gonna be my vision. And if I'm gonna be opposed every time I have a vision to do something with something that I invested in, then that's not fair to the business investor because now you're, you're, you're telling the business investor the only way you can come and, and do business is our community is by having a, a community say yea or nay. But we didn't say yea or nay to, to the, the gas stations. That, that's right there that conduct.
Mr. Morel, we're getting, we're getting away from the, this particular zoning issue, and I want to stay focused on this.
Yes, sir. So that, that's my answer to her question.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Um, all right, are there any other objectors that haven't spoken? Okay. You know, Alder, Alderman Mitchell, did, did you have anything more that you wanted to say on this matter before we go back to Mr. Merrill for his, for his closing?
Yes, yes. First of all, I appreciate all the residents in the community that came out. Contrary to what Mr. Morel said, they were not coached by my office, uh, which is a good thing. They came on their own, on their own free will to defend something that they wholeheartedly believe in. One thing, several things we want to make sure we do it clear on. His business does not exist right now. The zoning where this bit, where this property is located does not allow any one of these type of businesses. It is B one three, is not allowed. The, the, the potential business owner entered into a lease situation with the actual and current owner of the property. Did not come to the community. I haven't spoke with him, did not talk to Business Affairs, Consumer, Consumer Protection, um, and go through their training to talk about, you know, to guide him, keep process on the building, did not talk with buildings. They're not doing any of that, which is, which is indicative of passionate, would-be entrepreneurs. And I had several conversations with the city to make sure we do a better job of making that service and consultation accessible to avoid this kind of, um, the, this kind of interaction. Because all of this should have been handled at my level, at the community level. Mr. Morel has repeatedly said that he owns the property. Not true. Looking at quarter deeds and heard the owner does not own this property. He, upon the lease term, he has supported the opportunity of an option to buy. That is not ownership. And I've had conversations with the owner who has been made aware of the plans and direction for that Seventy-fifth Street corridor, which can be viewed and read in the South Shore Corridor Study that was initiated by me with the Department of Planning in twenty eighteen. And if, and in that document, over five hundred community residents were surveyed to discuss about, to discuss the type of businesses that, that the community wanted and will be a benefit to the neighborhood. From that corridor study, we found that we have, the community has opined about we having the personal service thing, uh, businesses like barber shops, nail salons. There was no mention at any point of residents, whether they've been there two years or seventy years, about wanting to have any massage therapy, which is not a bad business. And, 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 and none of them are bad businesses. Which brings me to this point. This is not, business owners need to realize owning a business and establishing a business is not necessarily the right, it's a privilege. Our, our, the South Shore neighborhood is saturated with homeowners and long-term residents and renters that have chosen that neighborhood for a, to, 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 to enjoy a high quality of life. And as you heard from many of the constituents on the call, that has been compromised for decades. And we are, we are now started to go in a direction that put, that stabilizes that area and so we can build on. The Seventy-fifth Street corridor has a lot going on right now, but it's, but, but, but it's slow because of court proceedings. A lot of our businesses are owned by walkaway landlords, owners that are not in the U S, owners of building a property that is inside of land trust, inside of trust wrapped around an LLC. It is, it is, it is, it has been a, a constant challenge with my office, community members and the city to unravel this, to make these properties available for, for, for ownership and subsequent establishment of business that provides goods and services to the community that the community needs, wants, desires and deserves. We are sticking with that plan. Across the street, we have the daycare who has been there decades. We have the community, I mean, the Villa Windsor Park, who has been there for decades, who has bought into the vision and purchased a lot across the street. So to kind of take site control to regulate some of the activity that was going on, 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 on the corridor. The city on lock. Since then, because we recognized there was a lot of loitering. The, 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 the building on seventy-five hundred South Shore Drive, we, we, we work with the new ownership with, and taking it into the direction. So we want to endure all the loitering and all the nefarious activity that has happened over there over the years. Seventy, Seventy-fifth and Coles has been a area that we have endured much, quadruple homicides. We had to, I had to make the decision to, to close that garden. I, I frequented that garden. I was there whenever we had events. But at three in the morning, when I take a drive over there, I got drug activity. I got people having sex on the corner. I got all type of things going on. And we have taken the stance in South Shore that we have to get our neighborhood back together. And that requires a very deliberate and focused attempt to bring the, to, to create, to, to create more, well, recreate homeownership to stabilize renting situations, to bring back those businesses and make them more attractive for investors. We are not against these businesses. They are not necessary at this time while we stabilize. We have a lot going on and we're gonna stay the course. I, 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 I welcome Ms. Mr. Morel. My office has always been, you commented that, you know, you, something on Ninety-fifth Street. I, I don't. My office has always been open for, for you. The A C P has been open for you. The community has been. I've had several, several meetings. To, to date, I've had three hu- over three hundred and sixty constituent nights. You say you live in the neighborhood. I've had town halls. We have over forty town halls, several of which the mayor's were present at. We've had, we have, we have had round tables with Department of Planning to discuss the, 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 the investment in the community. We have talked about Neighborhood Opportunity Fund grants. We've talked about spin grants. We've talked about, we have had a lot going on in South Shore, specifically Seventy-fifth, where this dialogue that we had today was not necessary. All of this could have been taken care of prior, prior to this. So I, I, I'll, I'm, I'm starting to get long-winded, but what, the closing, I'm, I'm asking the zoning board commissioners to not allow a special use permit to override the fact that these type of businesses is not allowed in the current zone. If down the line, this is something that the community wants, we will go through the process. We will, you will get his day, for lack of a better way to phrase it, his day in court and make his case. But that has not been done to this point. The fact that we have gone with this type of dialogue and this call talks, speaks volumes to that this is not a good situation, absent the business. You coming in as a new business owner with this kind of sentiment is not the way you want to come in. So with that said, my office, my community, we're gonna continue on and fight for the direction of the community, particularly Seventy-fifth Street, with all the new plans and legislation that I have enacted and the city has supported me with to make the viable changes in our, on our corridor that, that, that we can first, first attract the businesses that we want and need and then build upon that. So with that said, thank you, Z B A Commissioners.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. Uh, don't leave just yet because, uh, Merrill does get, does get a, an opportunity to ask you questions, Alderman.
I understand.
Mr. Merrill, if you have questions for the Alderman, uh, you can ask a question. Again, if you've got a comment, let's save it till the end. Um, but if you have questions for the Alderman, uh, now is the time.
My questions are, one, I contacted your office several times since March. I called your office repeatedly over ten times to try to schedule a sit-down between me and you to discuss my vision for the building. The building that you insinuate that I don't own, it is under a private buyer's contract that's notarized between me and the owner for buying the building, just like the home residence that I'm buying. I know him personally. He owns the, the daycare across the street. So what I'm saying to you is, I have reached that. He owns the the daycare across street. So what I'm saying to you is, I have reached out to your office. I have tried to have a sit down with your office. I have in the past been to those meetings that you discussed. But those meetings I've been to only ended in conversation and no action. I went to the the place on seventy first and right before you get to Jeffrey. And set in the Black Caucus meetings and and everybody that came and attended for the business owners to sit down and talk about grants and all that. I have attended all of it. What I'm telling you is, I reached out to your office personally several times. And tried to schedule a meeting to come sit down and discuss my vision with my building with you and been turned away each time. I was told multiple times, leave an email, he'll respond back. I leave an email, I have the emails. But what I'm petitioning the board right now, according to what you're saying, is allow me another hearing day. To go in the community and get the community's response on whether or not they want the spa. If they don't want it, we don't have to go any further. If they do, I will present. The the addresses and names and signatures of the people in the community.
Mister, to the extent that's a request for a continuance of this hearing, it's denied. Um today was the day, you've you've known that today was the hearing day and and so it's being heard today. We're not gonna grant a continuance now. Okay, we're gonna.
And and then my my question is, since this is my first time. After your ruling, whether it's for or against, at a appeal process. Will I be allowed to petition the community and and present it in front of the board?
I I'm not, I'm not here to give you legal advice or 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 answer.
Yes, understood. I I got, I got a couple of numbers of attorneys that you had. Um on on your uh hearing earlier, so I will contact them and get the info.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so my, so my question to Mr. Mitchell was, what happened to all those meetings I tried to schedule? And with no avail, I I got no sit down from March until June.
Alder- Alderman Mitchell. Um, you know, I I do want to say before you respond, Alderman Mitchell, we're 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 getting away.
No.
From the zoning issue here. Uh so I this question.
Mr. Merrill, I I I I know you called the office yesterday. We can take this off, this is not the place for that. If you don't mind.
Uh I'm I'm perfectly fine with.
Okay, okay, all right. Um. We are now, we're going back to uh and I said we were gonna go back to Mr. Merrill, but I actually. Want to get to the supporter too as well because she she does get a uh get get to get a last word in. Um we are now done with the objectors, we're moving back to the applicant. Um Alderman Mitchell, thank you for 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 your time here today. Um and we're gonna go to Shauna. Uh before we go to uh Mr. Merrill for the final word. Um but Shauna, uh you've been waiting patiently and I appreciate that. Um this is your time to, you know, express something that hasn't been expressed already. Uh you know, Mr. Merrill has said a lot in in support of his application. If you have something. More to add, then you can add it now. Um otherwise, I'm gonna go to Mr. Merrill for for a very brief closing. I'm gonna ask for Mr. Merrill, for Mr. Merrill.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Sanchez. I know you're like, oh my God, this is so much. But um uh I just wanna, again, I just wanna say like, I respect everybody that's been on the call and that's provided their feedback. I do recognize I am of a different different demographic than other folks on the call, no disrespect. Um I want something over here and we need this over here, like we have nothing but despair, so that's why we have crime. Prayers do not prevent crime, policing does not prevent crime, economic um opportunity prevents crime. So if a flyer is stopping me and my homegirls from getting our nails done, getting a nice massage. If a flyer is stopping people from getting jobs that they can actually walk to, like myself, I can walk ten minutes. Uh to the said establishment, then this is just like a bunch of foolishness, like. We need something over here and from the sounds of it, the only reason why it's not is because there's already a plan in place. For that corridor and I'm not a part of that plan. I do not represent the community in which has been said of South Shore. I represent. People like myself, like my neighbor, the renters, uh people of my age group, people just like me, like-minded, like myself. That would love to support another black-owned establishment, another black man trying to make it and put other people on. Um so I hope the board, I know this has been a lot of back and forth, but I hope that you guys recognize like. There's literally nothing over here, so by saying you don't want anything over here, all you want more is crime. Because there's crime, because there's nothing over here. So please give these people a chance. Um I hope if it's open, I'm I'm gonna come and bring all my people, I'm literally. Cause like I said, I can walk my neighbors and everybody, so I just wanna thank you guys. Uh for letting us talk and, you know, I am in full support. And um Alderman Greg, if this is not something you want, then you need to let people like myself know because you don't even have a website up.
Okay, all right, all right.
Saying like the plan for the for the neighborhood, I'm not a part of that plan. I guess it's only a few people on South Shore. But I am a South Shore resident and I want to be a part of those meetings and discussions, so thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um Mr. Merrill, uh we're we're at the end now, okay?
Okay, can you give my expedite a opportunity? She was patiently waiting.
Oh, uh who's who's, uh oh, is that's Ms. Shelton, yes.
Yes.
Anything, anything new, Ms. Shelton? I, no, no, no repeats, please.
No, not at all. I just really want to stress that um I did sit down with uh Mr. Derek. And then we're going over with the twenty-four hour watchman service. We're trying to cure all the violations to make it up, living and haveable for the the business that is going to be there. Um and provide those employments to the community. So that's that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And um all right, Mr. Merrill.
I will keep it very brief because I I have several other things uh I needed to address on the calls that I missed. So I want to thank the committee for considering my application and hearing me out. And I also want to thank the posers for taking the time out to give me opportunity. To let them know what my actual vision is for the location. Um I want to reiterate that I will petition the community. And I will appeal whether it's for or against um opening at this current moment. And get the community actual, you know, the full community opinion on the on the matter. Uh I also want to state that I'd unheard several times from several objectors, including the the police, the Alderman. That the crime that they're experiencing has been there well before I got there. And it's gonna be there well after I'm gone. So I'm not increasing the criminal activity. I'm actually trying to help decrease the activity. And by being living in fear of what already has took place without anything being there. Is not fair to a potential business owner to say that, oh, well, you're gonna create this that's already here. If you open up, I can't create something that already exists. Only thing I can do is improve or decrease it in value. And I already stated how I plan on improving. My establishment being there in value of the community. And as for me still being there, whether or not it's a spa or whatever. I'm still gonna be the owner of the building. And I'm still gonna look to put something prominent. In place in that building that creates generational wealth to come for my children and their children. So I'm not looking to sell, I'm not looking to negotiate, I'm looking to help and prove. So with that being said, I hope the board takes real factual evidence. That hasn't been presented. Everything has been hypothetical. He might bring an atmosphere, he might bring the wrong crowd. Um somebody did something on his behalf that was out of his control, so therefore, even though he's not open, he's responsible for it. I'm not responsible for anything that takes place on social media. It's out of my control. So don't judge me based on a social media flyer. Judge me based on actual evidence. Of me actually disturbing the community or bringing chaos to the community, which I haven't. So that's what I would like to say and that's what I would depart with.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank everybody, uh Mr. Merrill, uh all the supporters, all the objectors, the Aldermen. Uh for coming in, uh we've heard a lot on this matter. And we are going to take it all under advisement. Um so thank you very much. Go to the board for questions. Oh, God, yeah, sorry. Um, all right. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Toya. Uh I I I've got so wrapped up in this, um but he, Commissioner Toya is correct. Does any of the board members have uh questions for uh for anyone?
Uh I I do want to make a statement to the uh uh person applying for the uh special use. So obviously, you're part, you you know, you you know the neighborhood, you're part of the neighborhood. I've been sitting on this board now for over twelve years. And I usually want to hear what the neighborhood has to say. That means the neighborhood groups, the business groups, the Alderman. And on this one, also the police. Obviously, I I I don't think you communicate, communication is the key to success. I'm not sure you communicated enough with the business groups and the neighborhood groups and the Alderman and the police department. Before you came to the board, um because I've heard a lot of passionate. Um testimonies from people don't think in this fits into the character of the neighborhood. So again, I I think you need to go back to the neighborhood and build some relationships with the neighborhood groups, the police. Uh the business groups and the Alderman. That's just my opinion. And I just wanted to go on record saying that because there was a lot, a lot of testimony here. And I think we've got it from all sides, business, neighborhood, Alderman and police. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
My my question was, do I wait after this is over to know the decision or will I be emailed a decision?
Uh well, we're we're gonna vote, uh uh we're at the end of all the cases today. We're gonna go into closed session to discuss all the cases and then we'll come out and we'll vote. So if you, if you remain uh uh watching the live stream, you can, you can see the vote at the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Um okay, and just to make clear, are are there any other questions from the from the board?
Uh yes, Chair, I have just a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh for Mr. Merrill, Mr. Merrill, I just wanted to confirm a couple of details um while we have you here today under oath. Are you the sole owner of Pharaoh's Gentleman Spa?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so no one other than you owns any part of that business?
I haven't, I'm working on selling uh thirty percent of the share. To a childhood friend that decided he wanted to invest, which is what the meeting um previously that was discussed it. Was about, and I have other business partners that's interested in purchasing, but they was waiting. To see what was the actual decision today, whether or not they would go forward. And those business partners um own several residents in that community as far as seventy third and Yates. Um as I spoke across the street at the daycare, um all throughout that seventh ward. They they own property and I have a very strong friend relation, so I have. Um future endeavors, depending on which way this hearing goes, to have other investors come on board.
Sure, thank you. I was curious about the current state. Um and then as it relates to this June seventeenth, twenty twenty event. Were you on the premises that day, sir?
Yes, I was at a business meeting and there was, that's why I asked the officer and I asked um the other officer. Who came out because I was there. There was no strippers, what witness or what cease and desist order. Took place to say that something was operational or out of the norm. It was a business meeting. Um that was hosted for investors to see the actual vision of the place. Um to come forward. So when the hearing was active and finished finalized. Whether or not they were gonna come on board, which was months ago.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh we certainly heard that story before. I just wanted to confirm just a few minor details as we go through this, so.
Yes, I was there.
Yeah, so my other question is, how many people were on premises on June seventeenth while you were there?
Twenty-five.
Did you write down all their names?
I have a list of invites, yes, that it was invite only and it was instructed to the security. Anybody not on the invite list is not allowed in.
Were people drinking on June seventeenth at that location?
No.
There was, it's your testimony, there was no alcohol that day?
There was no alcohol that they served to anybody, whether somebody had a drink prior to coming, which I don't think they should or or did. It was not under my control, but as far as actual alcohol being served or purchased. At my establishment, that did not happen.
Were there spa services provided that day?
Uh yes, it wasn't an actual, um it was an introduction. It wasn't a a full service. It was an introduction of the the dread tech, um the nail tech and and one of the featured barbers. Unfortunately, one of the barbers uh was killed and he didn't, he wasn't allowed to host himself to the investors. But yes, it was a massage person there that had um. The investors sit in a chair for a shoulder massage and she showed her vision because the room isn't, nothing is ready. So the room isn't ready to host massages or anything like that. We're waiting on you guys to make a decision to apply for the permits. So it wasn't a a lay down or robe type of massage deal. It was basically a shoulder massage explaining her vision to um the investors for the um massage room.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry to hear about the gentleman that was killed, but I I do appreciate the additional information. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
No, I just want to make one more statement that, as you all know, I just want you to know, Mr. Merrill, that that we're here to make zoning decisions. What happened on June seventeenth is not how I make a decision. My decision is zoning. That's we're zoning board of appeals. And I just want to know if this fits into the character of the neighborhood and that's what I'm looking at. So thank you.
Okay, uh we are gonna take this matter under advisement, uh and I want to thank everyone for their time. Uh at at this time, we're gonna, we're gonna take a a short recess. This isn't gonna be lunch yet. It's too, we're 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 too far behind for lunch right now. But uh I do move that we take a recess to twelve twenty. Uh Commissioner Toya seconds, uh Commissioner uh Esposito.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I vote yes. We are uh uh in recess until twelve twenty. Okay. I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are back. Uh, next up is calendar number three forty-seven dash twenty-two dash S. This is thirteen fifty-nine West Berry. All right, while we're getting everybody promoted, if there is anybody here in support or objection, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. All right, I can see we do have Javier Nunez and Joe Ryan. And we've got Counselor Augustine. Let me get the witnesses sworn. Mr. Nunez?
Yes, sir.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Javier Antonio Nunez, twenty-five oh one Kenilworth Avenue, Womack, Illinois.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Joe Ryan, could you state your name and address? You're you're muted right now.
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Queen Avenue in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and the board recognizes your expertise based on many past appearances.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Let me read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is the recommendation for three forty-seven dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to convert an existing ground floor commercial space to a business live work unit in an existing three-story mixed-use building. Provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and documents dated October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Axios Architects and Consultants. Counselor Augustine, the floor is yours. Uh, there are no objectors on this one, so you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon. For the record, again, my name is Fred Augustine. I'm with Law Offices of Augustine Associates LLC. I'm here on behalf of the applicant X and Z Properties LLC. The applicant owns a property at thirteen fifty-nine Miss Berry Street. Is currently, that address does is a commercial space within an existing three-story mixed-use building. The building, more specifically, the commercial space will remain. The plan is to establish a business live work unit within this space. Property is on B one-one, and in order to get a business live work unit within a B one-one, we need a special use with me this afternoon on behalf of the applicant Javier Nunez and our appraiser Joseph Ryan and just, Mr. Chairman, our architect Bill Kukales, he is, he has several matters on Zoom today. If the board does have any questions, he's available to answer any questions to terms of design. So I just.
Thank you.
So Mr. Nunez, first witness. Um, Mr. Nunez, please state your name and address for the record.
Javier Antonio Nunez, twenty-five oh one Kenilworth Avenue, Womack, Illinois.
And you are the authorized representative of the applicant X and Z Properties LLC?
Yes.
Applicant does own the property at thirteen fifty-nine West Berry, is that correct?
Yes.
And you are seeking to establish a business live work unit within this space, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, you executed an affidavit which I submitted to the board on your behalf, is that right?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony will be consistent with your affidavit, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Second witness is Joe Ryan. Uh, Mr. Ryan, please state your name and address for the record. Joe, you're mute. You're on mute again. Joe, you need to unmute.
Sorry. Joseph Ryan, ninety-four fifty-five South Queen Avenue in Chicago.
Um, Mr. Ryan, you've reviewed the subject property and the and the neighborhood as it relates to the proposed business live work unit, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have prepared a written report with your findings, is that correct?
That's correct.
And in addition, you executed an affidavit which my office submitted on your behalf to the board, is that correct?
Yes.
And if we continued, your testimony would be consistent with your affidavit affidavit and your report, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further questions of our witnesses. We're here to answer any questions for the board.
Thank you, Counselor Augustine. I I have a question for Mr. Nunez. Mr. Nunez, could you tell us exactly what your relationship is to X and Z Properties LLC?
I'm a hundred percent owner and manager.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I think we have what we need on this one. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, next up is calendar number three forty-eight dash twenty-two dash S. This is twenty-four oh one West Fifty-Ninth Street.
Chair, just for the record, I'm recused on this one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and if you're here in support or objection, please raise your hand, and we will get you promoted. Okay, I think I think we have everybody uh, here. Let me, um, let me get the witnesses sworn in. Let's start with with Randy Morrissey. Could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yeah, Randy Morrissey, address is nineteen hundred Chippingham Road in Woodridge, Illinois, six oh five one seven.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Jarrett, could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, Jason Jarrett, last name spelled J A R R E T T with offices at one forty-one West Jackson in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Dana Baker, could you state your name and address, please?
Dana Baker, the address is twelve fifty-one Elm Ridge Drive, Emilio, Ohio.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Um, I could, actually, I can see we have someone from the from the sixteenth ward. Uh, could you unmute?
It's good afternoon, Brandon Bradford, Chief of Staff, the sixteen four Service Office.
Are you, are you here in in objection or support?
Support.
Okay, great. Do you want to speak at the beginning or at the end? It's it's your 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 call.
Oh, I'll just speak at the beginning since you have me now, if that's fine.
That, yeah, that's fine. Could you just, again, for the record, state your name and role, please?
Okay, Brandon Bradford, Chief of Staff, sixteen four Service Office, alderman.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the alderman in the community is in support of this much-needed business. Fifth Third is coming to bring a bank to the corner of Fifty-Ninth and Western, which was an old pizza hut. Um, so again, the due diligence has been done to the community members within two hundred and fifty feet. There have been several community members held. Fifth Third has actually come out to community members and presented to members of the community as well as the alderman's office. Um, and the alderman is in full support of this action.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you for, thank you for coming. Um, before I turn it over to the to the attorney for the applicant, I do want to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is the recommendation for three forty-eight dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed single lane drive-through to serve a proposed Fifth Third Bank. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Fifth Third Bank National Association, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan and landscape plan dated March seven, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Terra Engineering LTD, and the floor plan and elevations dated April four, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Moody and Nolan. Okay, counselor. There are no objectors, so you can proceed with the short form.
Thank you, Chairman Sanchez, and thank you very much to the members of the zoning board of appeals. Um, as already has been sworn in, has been Randy Morrissey. Uh, first, my name is Lenny Assaro. I'm a partner at the law firm of Fagri Drinker, Biddle and Reith at three twenty Top Canal, uh, Suite thirty-three hundred, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh six. Uh, I represent the applicant Fifth Third Bank. The owner of the subject property is SCG Investments LLC. They provided a written letter consenting to this application. Um, as has been sworn in is Randy Morrissey, Vice President, Real Estate Manager at Fifth Third Bank, Dana Baker, Dana Baker, Architect and Project Manager, Moody Nolan, and Jason Jarrett, Certified Planner and Senior Associate, Oakren Kissel and Associates, Inc. Chairman Sanchez, in lieu of rereading what you've already stated as to the purpose of our application, I will then proceed to just ask a very brief, direct examination of Randy Morrissey. And then the other two witnesses have submitted affidavits, so I'll do the extremely short form with them. So with with that, may I proceed with Mr. Morrissey?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, um, you are the Vice President, Real Estate Manager of Fifth Third Bank, correct?
That is correct.
And Fifth Third Bank is a diversified financial services, um, a company with banking centers across the United States and many states, including Illinois, correct?
That is correct.
And the subject property is located at the southwest corner of Fifty-Ninth and Southwestern Avenue?
That is correct.
And Fifth Third Bank is under contract to purchase the property contingent on obtaining, uh, the approval of this special use application, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And, um, has the owner of the subject property provided, uh, strike that. Um, uh, the, the bank desires to develop the property into, um, an approximately nineteen hundred square foot single-story, uh, bank branch building with a drive-up automated, um, teller machine facility, correct?
Yes.
Lobby hours and drive-through hours will be Monday through Thursday, nine AM to five thirty PM. Uh, Friday, nine to, nine AM to six PM and Saturday, nine AM to two PM, correct?
Yes.
Is the expected number of customers per day for the ATM drive-through, uh, seven per hour?
Yes.
And is the anticipated proportion of customers who will use the drive-through fifty percent?
Yes.
Is the pro- projected peak hour customer traffic volume from two PM to four PM on Fridays?
Yes.
And is the expected number of customers per day for the remote drive-through three per hour or approximately twenty-five per day and then seven per hour during peak times?
Yes, correct.
And is the expected proportion of customers who will use the drive-through, um, uh, approximately fifty percent?
Yes.
And is the projected peak hours for the customer traffic volume two PM to four PM?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. And, um, um, with that, no further questions of Mr. Morrissey. Um, Chairman Sanchez, I would just now like to ask very abbreviated questions to Dana, Ms. Dana Baker.
Sure, yeah, if you can have them swear to their affidavits and then we'll open it up to the board for questions.
That's exactly what I intend to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Baker, uh, did you review, uh, and sign an affidavit in support of, uh, a proposed findings of fact with respect to this application?
I did.
And if you were called to testify today to the matters contained in your affidavit, uh, would you testify to the same, uh, information in that affidavit?
I would.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Turning now to Mr. Jason Jarrett.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Jarrett, um, did you, um, uh, review and sign an affidavit in support of, uh, the proposed findings of fact in connection with this application?
I did.
And did you also prepare a written report expressing your opinions and bases for your opinions in support of the application?
Yes, I did.
And if you were called to testify, um, to the matters contained in your affidavit and in your report, uh, would you testify to the same, uh, here today in this hearing?
Yes, I would.
With that, Chairman Sanchez, I have no further questions, um, but would respectfully request, um, that the application be approved.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now going to call calendar number three forty-nine dash twenty-two dash S. This is twenty-one forty-five Northwestern. Here, if you are, uh, here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
Uh, good morning.
Good morning, Counselor Barnes.
Good afternoon.
Or, yeah, good afternoon, actually. It should be morning, but it's afternoon already.
We went over the hill. We went over the hill. Um, I just wanted to speak up because I, um, I had messaged your staff that the applicant, um, and his wife will actually be joining through their telephone. Um, I provided the phone number. I hesitate to do so on the record. Um, but, so you might want to look for a three-one-two.
I think we, I think we may have them right now.
They? Okay, did they get advanced? Okay.
Okay, we're here.
Oh, wonderful.
Excellent. Counselor Barnes. Counselor Barnes, you, do you intend to have both of them testify?
So, um, the applicant, Mr. Amel Bear, um, he has a little bit of difficulty, um, language between the languages, so his wife Veronica is joining us, just in case there are any translation issues. Um, since we're doing an abbreviated presentation, though, um, and everything is in my findings of fact, hopefully there should be no issue.
Okay.
And I can introduce them on the record.
Yeah, uh, yeah, let me, I'd like to get, uh, Mr., I'll get him, I'll get him sworn, I'll get Mr. Amel Bear sworn in as, uh, to testify and I'll get, uh, Mrs. Amel Bear sworn in as a translator if, if needed. Does that sound good?
Perfect. I love it. Yep.
Okay, uh, Mr. Uh, Amel Bear, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Hector Amarburg. And my address is twenty-one eighty-two North Maplewood Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Amel Bear, could you state your name and address, please?
Veronica Moreno. And my address is twenty-one eighty-two North Maplewood Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six four seven.
And, um, I guess first of all, is the, uh, is, is, is Mr. Amel Bear's, uh, language, is it, is it Spanish?
Spanish, yes.
Okay, so, uh, do you swear or affirm to accurately translate English to Spanish and Spanish to English?
Yes, I swear.
Thank you. Uh, and Joe Ryan is already sworn, uh, so you can go ahead with, with the short form.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Honorable Chair and esteemed commissioners. I'm happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant El Magico LLC, which is solely owned and managed by Mr. Amel Bear. Um, we are here today seeking a special use, which would allow Mr. Amel Bear to locate, establish and operate a barber shop within the existing single commercial storefront at the subject property. Um, Mr. Amel Bear is under a lease, or I'm sorry, he's executed a letter of intent, which will allow him to lease the subject commercial unit conditioned upon approval of the subject's special use. We are appearing before this board, um, with the informed and expressed written consent of the property owner, um, Heinz Partners LLC, um, who is the beneficiary of the lease agreement.
Counselor Barnes, uh, I'm sorry, Counselor, before I, before you go any further, can I read the, uh, I forgot to read the Department of Planning's, uh, recommendation. Can I, can I do that?
Of course, of course.
All right, thank you. Sorry, sorry, I forgot. Um, okay, so this is the recommendation, uh, of the Department of Planning and Development for three forty-nine dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed barber shop.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, B P D. Um, Mr. Amel Bear has, um, over twenty-four years of experience as a licensed barber or a certified barber, excuse me. Um, for the past thirteen or so years, he has been working with his brother, um, just west to the west in the, a neighboring, um, neighborhood, Logan Square. Um, and he has finally gotten an opportunity to open his own shop, um, which would be at the subject property. He's, this has been a dream of his for quite some time. Um, so with that, again, all of the operating characteristics and everything are in my findings of fact, but we're happy to answer questions in that regard. I will just quickly put Mr. Amel Bear back on the record, um, just to attest to his affidavit and then we can get Joe Ryan in and out and answer questions, so.
Thank you.
Veronica, if you can please get, um, Mr. Amel Bear back on the record. Um, can you just ask him if he would attest to, or if he can confirm that all of the statements that were made in his affidavit and in the corresponding findings of fact are accurate?
Yeah, yeah, this is a good, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good.
Yes.
Thank you, um. And if he were to continue to testify here at this hearing today, would his testimony be consistent with the statements in those documents?
In case of that, you're gonna present a testimony, your testimony will agree with what you just said.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Ryan. If you can.
I'm here.
Hi. Um, Mr. Ryan, you were retained by the applicant to evaluate the subject property and the proposed special use for a barber shop at this location and to make a determination as to whether or not the proposed operations at this particular site meet all of the standards and requirements for a special use as, um, set forth in the current zoning ordinance, is that right?
That's correct.
And did you have an opportunity to perform those evaluations?
I did.
And, and, um, is it true that you were able to, um, memorialize your observations and opinions in a expert report that was submitted to the board prior to this hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. If you were to continue to testify, or, excuse me, in summary and in your findings, did you conclude that the proposed barber shop at this particular location meets all of the standards and requirements for a special use?
It does, yes.
Thank you. And if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in your report?
Yes, it would.
Thank you so much, um. Chair, I am happy, we're happy to answer any questions that the commissioners and/or you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? We have what we need. We'll take it under advisement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Next up is calendar number, uh, three three fifty dash twenty-two dash S and three fifty-one dash twenty-two dash Z. And if you are here in support or objection, uh, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted.
And Mr., oh, no, I think actually all of my witnesses are appearing by video. Now. So I, oh. From, um, the applicant's end, we should have Amber and Tom Ginsberg, our project architect, Charlie Vins, and then our M A I certified appraiser, who I already see, Mr. Terry O'Brien.
Okay, I think we have everybody. Let me, um, let me swear the witnesses in. Uh, let's start with Amber Ginsberg. Could you state your name and address, please?
Amber Ginsberg, fifty-two hundred South Ellis, apartment five oh two, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one five.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Ginsberg, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Tom Ginsberg, uh, same address, fifty-two hundred South Ellis, apartment five oh two, Chicago, six oh six one five.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, Charlie Vins, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh, Charlie Vins, twenty-five sixty-seven East Seventy-first Street, Chicago, Illinois, uh, six zero six four nine.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And Terrence O'Brien, could you state your name and address, please?
Uh, Terrence O'Brien, O P S F B R I E N. Maintain offices at one four five Revere Drive, Northbrook, Illinois, professional real estate appraiser.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and we recognize your expertise based on many past appearances.
Thank you.
Before I hand it over to Counselor Barnes, I'm gonna read the, uh, Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. This is for calendar number three fifty dash twenty-two dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed private arts club with one artist dwelling unit on the ground floor and one dwelling unit on the second and third floor, provided one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant. Bezzalell Art Club. The peak capacity of the club is no more than forty occupants. And, uh, three, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site plan, first floor plan, elevations and two sheets and landscape plan dated April fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, and second and third floor plans dated October fourteen, two thousand twenty-two, all prepared by the structural group LTD. With that, Counselor, uh, we do not have any objectors on this one, so you can proceed with the short form.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Once more, for the record, my, my name is Sarah Barnes and I'm an attorney with the Law Offices of Sam Banks, located right here in Chicago, Illinois. Um, I'm super happy to be here this afternoon on behalf of the applicants, um, Bezzalell Art Club and Narrow Bridge LLC, which are both owned and managed by Mr. and Mrs. Ginsberg. On, for the sake of everyone's time, um, and efficiency, I am gonna do the short form as suggested. Um, I would, however, this is such a passion project, it's over two years in the making for the applicants. So, um, and Amber is just such a powerful force in social activism and the arts world. I would, um, recommend that any of you, if you have some time later, um, Google her, uh, and look at some of her work. It's truly inspiring. Um, so with that, um, also here with us today, we do have, as the chair indicated, we have our project architect, Charlie Vins, and our M A I certified appraiser, Mr. Terry O'Brien. The proposal that brings us before this honorable board this afternoon puts an even more interesting twist on the adaptive reuse and reactivation of an old abandoned church property. Toward these ends, thank you, the subject site, which is located in the middle of a vibrant multi-family residential block in the West Woodlawn neighborhood, is improved with a three-story building that was originally constructed in the nineteen twenties. For the past almost century and up until the COVID pandemic forever altered our views of socialization, the building was occupied by various different religious congregations as a place of religious assembly. The building was abandoned a few years ago by the most recent of those congregations. The applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Ginsberg, who are both educators and mentors at a university in the immediate area, acquired the property and the building, um, shortly after its abandonment with the intent and desire to reactivate the existing improvements through a truly community-based program with a focus on the arts environment and social activism. Accordingly, for the past couple of years, the applicants have been working with Alderman Taylor and her community liaisons, as well as with the city's Department of Planning and Development towards the programming, programming for the revitalization of this site, which such programming calls for the establishment of a private arts club on and within the first floor of the subject building, which is specifically intended to service artists and creative minds with their roots on the south side. Um, with some first preference being given and offered to residents of the Woodlawn neighborhood, as well as the twentieth ward. It is on this aspect of the proposed programming, the private arts club, which triggers the subject's special use. Um, in a further and relevant brief summary, the programming for the adaptive reuse and reactivation of this property also calls for the interior build-out of the second and third floors of the subject building as a single duplex unit, which if approved, will become the primary residence for Mr. and Mrs. Ginsberg. Due to the century-old footprint of the existing building, which occupies the entire depth of the subject site with no off-street parking accommodations, certain variations are required to permit the establishment and occupancy of the single dwelling unit. For that aspect of the project, um, I will defer to Mr. Vins for any additional, um, testimony. So with that, and no further ado, I will turn the virtual microphone back over to, um, Ms. Ginsberg. Are you there?
Thank you.
Hi, uh, thank you so much. And I'm sorry to deflate and make this anticlimactic, but you've been sitting here all morning as well, so we are gonna keep it short. On, but Ms. Ginsberg, can you just restate again your name and? So we are gonna keep it short. Um but Ms. Ginsburg, can you just restate again your name and address for the record?
Amber Ginsburg, fifty-two hundred South Ellis, apartment five oh two, Chicago, six zero six one five.
Thank you. Um and if the proposed relief is granted here today, both the special use and the variations, again, it's your intention that you would reside within the second and third floor of the existing building, and that would be your primary residence, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Right, and then you would be very actively involved in the private arts club that would occupy the first floor, is that also true?
Yes.
Thank you. And towards that end, um the club will be membership by membership only, is that right?
Yes.
And you will operate pursuant to a very precise and codified rule of operations with guidelines and screening for all of your members, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Um and as read into the record by the chair, um it is your intention and commitment to cap the capacity, the occupancy of the actual arts club to forty members at one time, is that correct?
Yes.
But that your actual membership, your overall membership in the club might exceed forty members, and you hope to grow over time?
Yes.
Great, and I would make that clarification, um Mister Chair, for the record, because the findings like of fact did contain an indication that membership might be capped at around fifty, but that's to begin. Um obviously, the intention is to continue to service the community and to grow with the community. So again, yeah, actual membership might um get larger, but occupancy will be capped at forty.
It's noted for the record, thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, then, Ms. Ginsburg, um prior to these proceedings, you were provided with a copy of those findings of fact as well as an affidavit. If you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements made in those um documents?
Yes, it would.
Thank you so much. Um excuse me, Mister Chair, I'm not sure if you want me to go through all my witnesses and then questions, or if you wanted to take any questions, witness by witness.
We'll do, we'll do questions at the end, so you can go through all of them.
Perfect. Um Mister Ginsburg, if you'd like to quickly also re-present yourself, um I would like to get you on the record.
Great, I'm Tom Ginsburg, and again, address fifty-two hundred South Ellis, number five oh two, Chicago, six oh one five.
And is your um testimony con- consistent to that of Ms. Ginsburg?
Yes, precisely.
Thank you. Um and to um any further testimony that you would provide would be consistent with the statements that were made in the findings of fact and supporting affidavit.
Yes, correct.
Thank you so much. Um and then next, we will go to Mister Vins. Let's do the project architect next, please.
Uh yes, uh so with regard to the hardships, um uh the variation for the um rear yard setback, which is not conforming, um the required rear yard setback is uh five hundred sixty-two square feet, um providing that would require, you know, actually um removing the rear portion of the building, which is not what we wanna do. Um however, there is a a north um side yard um that is part of the property that is um where we're putting a two-car garage and provides uh two thousand five hundred fifty-four square feet of open space. Uh and the garage also has a roof deck, which which would um uh count as up as an open space for a total of three thousand one hundred fifty-four square feet of open space. And so um that is what we are seeking the variance for.
Thank you so much. So in actuality, although it is not under the strict application of the zoning ordinance, although that two hundred, I'm sorry, two thousand plus square feet of open space um will be fully landscaped um and permeable, that does not count towards the calculable and required rear yard open spaces, is that correct, Mister Vins?
That's correct.
Um and again, it would be impossible to actually locate any amount of the required rear yard open space on this site due to the existing footprint of this century-old building, is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you so much. Um and Ms. Ginsburg did not get an opportunity to um attest to this or testify to this, but that um two thousand plus square feet of open space along the north side of the building is actually gonna be a new community garden, um fully landscaped and beautiful with, I think, fruits and vegetables. Um so if you have questions in that regard, we're happy to answer them. Um so then, Mister Vins, you, I know you worked very diligently for many, many months, almost a year with um the Department of Planning and Development towards the the programming for the adaptive reuse of this um property. Is it your professional opinion that the design and programming that you created um meets all of the standards and requirements for a variation as set forth under the current zoning ordinance?
It is.
Thank you. And if you two um continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in the findings of fact as well as your corresponding affidavit?
So they would be.
Thank you so much. Last, but absolutely certainly not least, Mister O'Brien, can you please go back on the record, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Um Mister O'Brien, you were retained by the applicants um to evaluate the subject property and the um immediate area and to make an evaluation and determination as to whether a proposed private arts club on the first floor of the existing building meets all of the standards and requirements for a special use as set forth under the current zoning ordinance, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And did you have an opportunity to visit the property and to make those evaluations and to develop conclusions based on your observations?
Yes, I uh inspected the property on May fifteenth of this year. And then uh this past Wednesday, I went out once again to refresh my memory.
Thank you. Um and Mister O'Brien, is it true that your observations and the findings deductives on the same were memorialized in a report that you prepared and tendered to this board prior to this hearing?
Ye- yes, within the report, I addressed the criteria for a special use. I also addressed the criteria for a variation. I just would like to make one comment uh on page five of my report. I want you to know the subject lot is a substandard depth, it's only a hundred and twenty point five feet. I made the mistake of saying it was eighty feet, so I was off. It's still a substandard lot, but the depth isn't eighty feet, it's one two zero point five.
Thank you, Mister O'Brien. Um you're not allowed to make any more errors in your finding. You're supposed to be a superhero. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you for the clarification.
You sound like my wife.
With that, then, Mister O'Brien, is it your professional opinion that the public arts, or sorry, the private arts club on the first floor um ended the programming for the adaptive reuse of the existing building does in fact meet all of the standards and criteria for a special use and for the requested variation as set forth under the current zoning ordinance?
Yes, my opinion meets all the criteria for the variation as well as the special.
Thank you. And aside from the correction to the discrepancy in your report, would, if you were to continue to testify here today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements and the findings that were made in your report?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. And then just lastly, for the record, uh Mister Chair and our esteemed commissioners, um I did forget to mention, uh Alderman Taylor did provide her letter, a letter of support um this morning, actually, she apologized, she was caught up in the budget hearing, so she didn't have an opportunity to send it over until this morning. I'm not sure if it made its way to everybody, but staff was provided with a copy of that letter of support um for the record.
Okay, thank you. Um any questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Toy. I have one question for Mister Ryan. You said this was a short lot and you gave us your corrections, which is great. All I like to know when I hear short lots, is it the whole block or is it just this particular land that's a short lot?
Uh Mister Toy, the name is O'Brien, not Ryan.
Oh, sorry, sorry, my mistake.
It's quite all right. The entire block is is short.
Yes, I I in the future, could you mention that or I'll just keep asking the same question?
I will try to, yes.
Thank you, Mister. I'll remember your name if you remember that. How's that?
I'll remember your name.
All right, you re- you remember the short lots and I'll remember your name. Thank you.
Okay.
I usually catch that one, Commissioner Toy, that's on me.
Oh, you know I'm gonna catch this, Sarah. You know I'm gonna question, but I I like being corrected, I like being educated. I will not forget Mister O'Brien's name as long as he doesn't forget the short lot, and I won't forget.
Yeah, and that one, that it, that same line of um facts are in the findings of fact, just for you, Mister Joy.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. And and Brian's, and Brian's thinking, no, he's reminding me of my dad right now. I know your dad, Brian.
You know, uh rega- just on this point, though, um regarding the 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 short lot, uh fair to say that uh the aside from the short lot, the hardship would be the uh the existing building and the fact that you'd have to actually remove a part of the building, true?
That is, yeah. So I think even it's the orientation of the existing building, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
Uh this is Commissioner Esposito, just a quick question, um and I apologize if, in fact, you mentioned this already. Uh to the applicant, when are you hoping to complete the project and open the club?
That's a touchy subject.
Yeah. Maybe I can speak to it. Um you know, obviously, it depends on getting the permits, depends on the result of this hearing. Um our current estimate is that if we were able to move forward, uh you know, right away with permits in December, we would be able to complete it by August. Um that that's what we would hope, but of course, it all depends on many different city departments and what they would allow us to do.
Of course. Okay, good to know. Thank you.
And I can confirm that that target has changed about thirty times throughout the last two years, so fingers crossed.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, uh no other questions, so we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the weather if you ever get out of here, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to move to three fifty-two dash twenty-two dash Z and three fifty-three dash twenty-two dash Z. This is twenty-eight twenty West Lindale. If you are here in supporter objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, I think we have everybody here. Uh let me get the witnesses sworn. And let's start with Vladimir Galley. Could you uh unmute and then uh state your name and address, please?
Um yes, hi, Vladimir Galley, two five zero Sylvan Road, Glanco, Illinois, six zero zero two two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And then Chris Dassie, could you state your name and address, please?
My name is Christopher Dassie, licensed architect. My address is five nine three zero Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you. And then Counselor Barton, uh we do not have any objectors on this one, so you can proceed with the short form.
I understand. Um thank you. For the record, my name is Timothy Barton. I'm at the law firm of Thomas R. Raines LLC. I'm here today representing the applicant and property owner, Galley Holding LLC. Uh before I continue, I just wanted to point out one thing on the agenda. For the second part of this case, three fifty-three dash twenty-two Z, the applicant is listed as Gallery Holding LLC, but it is in fact the same applicant as three fifty-two dash twenty-two Z, um which is Galley Holding.
I can see that. I I I see that uh that is, we do have a typo uh with regard to three fifty-three dash twenty-two dash Z. We will amend it on the record to reflect that the applicant's name is Galley Holding LLC. In other words, the same applicant as three fifty-two dash twenty-two dash Z.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the applicant is currently building a seven-dwelling unit building. Uh it has a seven-space parking pad, um but he has now applied for a revision permit to replace that parking pad with a brick garage. The lot has two hardships, however, affecting this construction. One, um most principal is the shape of the parcel. Um it has five uneven sides. And secondly, the lot is substandard in length. And to anticipate Commissioner Toy's um observation, the lot is the same as is the same depth as all the others on the block. However, a portion of it is considerably shorter um due to that uh due to part of its site being cut off. Uh because of these factors, in order to construct the garage, the applicant is seeking the variations uh to reduce the rear yard setback from thirty feet to two feet, um as well as the south side yard setback from five feet uh to zero, the north side setback from five feet to two point six seven, and also reducing the minimum rear yard open space from four hundred and fifty-six square feet to zero. Granted, the variations will allow the applicant to erect this garage. The lot, just for your orientation purposes, is a half-black west of Milwaukee Avenue. Uh there is an alley just west of Milwaukee which runs diagonally. Also, it intersects the northeast corner of the applicant's lot, which for all practical purposes clips off that northeast corner um for what would otherwise be a regularly shaped uh parcel. Consequently, this east property line uh measures only eighty-one point uh nine feet um for its north-south dimension before it angles off in a northwesternly fashion. As I say, the lot is only one hundred feet deep on its longer west ba- west boundary, which makes it um twenty-five feet shorter than the standard lot. As a result of the lot, the slot's irregular shape and its substandard dimensions, the alley frontage isn't wide enough or deep enough to build a garage that conforms with the zoning standards. Um with that, I'll call uh the, my first witness, Vladimir Galley. Vlad?
Yes.
Just for orientation, you are the managing member of Galley Holdings LLC, which is the property owner and applicant for this?
Yes.
Good. Um and did I prepare um an affidavit on your behalf, which you reviewed and signed?
Yes.
And if I were to continue questioning to you today, would you answer? Uh would your answer be consistent with uh that affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I turn to Chris Dassie now?
Yes.
Chris, you're the architect of record for um for this proposal?
Yes, I am.
And was the description I gave uh accurate describing the lot and the difficulties? And was the description I gave uh accurate describing the lot and the difficulties and placing the garage on it?
Yes, you are correct.
And did I also prepare an affidavit for you, uh, which you reviewed and signed?
Yes, I did.
And which we submitted to the board?
Yes.
So if I were to continue questioning to you today, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, they would.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, does the board, uh, do you want any further testimony or does the board have any questions?
I think we're gonna open it for questions now.
Okay.
Um, I'll 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 ask the question to the other board members first. Uh, do do any of the board members have questions?
Yes.
All right, proceed. Uh, Commissioner Esposito.
Thank you. Um, could you describe what compelled the or could the applicant describe what compelled the decision to change the original plan, which I believe was a parking pad for this project? Is that correct?
Yes.
So can you describe why you no longer would be satisfied with a parking pad that you planned to construct initially?
Because building with um garage car parking, it's more marketable, safer and secure for residents.
But you you would have known that before, correct?
Um,
like when you applied for the permit?
Yes.
So why are you coming in now with this request rather than when you originally applied for the permit? That's what I'm curious about.
I think I just like uh just lost this mind and then as soon as we start to build it in this area and then we decided we have to more secure um, this property because um I think that this be big help on the potential buyers and residents.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Now, on 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 this line of of questioning, and maybe this is for the for the architect, um, you know, had this decision been made um before construction, uh, would you would you have needed to build a smaller building in order to to fit the garage?
The garage, the building itself is would not be smaller. The issue with the garage is that the garage has additional requirements. For instance, the garage has to push two foot away from the rear property line, pushing closer to the building. Uh, in addition, because the garage has to go lot line to lot line, we are not able to have a a regular standard exterior trash enclosure. We have to put the trash enclosures within the garage. And then on top of that, the garage itself has wall thicknesses, you know, front and back, so that adds additional foot of thickness just in the depth of the garage. So all these little factors affect um, why we need a variance for a garage as opposed to just leaving it going straight zoning with a uh parking pad. Does that make sense?
Well, I I guess, um, I I I think I understand it. You you're saying why you need relief now, I think, is 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 what that answer was. But what I'm saying is, you know, you you make this plan for a uh for this building with a parking pad and you 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 start con- construction. Um, and you you don't need a variation for the for the for the parking pad, right?
Correct.
But um, but you you would have needed a variation for the garage, and I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, would the if you wanted to do the garage uh a- as of right, would you have had to had have a smaller building?
No, because currently our building doesn't even touch to exist the building as built. Why the the plan examiner determined that we needed to have a reduced the rear yard setback to two foot? I don't understand. I mean, we have the rear setback, we have the existing building, we've left it at that point. We have a gap between the building and the and the garage, so the rear yard setback wouldn't have been reduced.
Mr. Chairman? Sorry.
Yes.
Um, can I point out? So the rear yard here is uh the rear yard setback required is thirty feet. Um, the portion, the eastern portion, these, yeah, the eastern portion of this garage is thirty-four feet deep. Um, so regardless of the size of the principal building, uh, this garage would extend into the rear yard, the rear yard space, rear yard setback by four feet. So that's why I think that's why the examiner um denied it.
Okay, okay. Any other question? Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Esposito, do we, I I do we have an aerial photograph? Thank you.
Oh.
Here we go.
Where? Yes. It's an outdated one, but obviously. That's that's the better one.
Thank you. Okay. So I could uh either the applicant or Mr. Barton uh sort of describe to us how this fits in with surrounding properties?
It is more or less the same dimension, uh, the same depth as the other ones and um as the as the existing uh buildings on the block directly to the west, um, which is um, in the up uh above in this photograph. In addition, there is a um large, um, it's one of these photographs shows the view looking west down the alley. There is a large um um, building there, again, built to the alley line with uh with parking in it. Does that, does that help?
It does. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I think we have what we need. We'll take it under advisement.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, now, three fifty-four dash twenty-two dash Z was withdrawn. So we are going to three fifty-five dash twenty-two dash Z. This is fifteen eighteen West Granville. I can see we've got Counselor Borstein. And if you are here in support or objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. And I think we've got your witnesses as well.
Great.
So let me let me get them sworn in. Uh, Ariel Vaca. Did you say your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Ariel Vaca. I'm with the Board of Education with address at forty-two West Madison Street, Chicago, Illinois six oh six oh two.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And thank you. And Chad Hooper, could you say your name and address, please?
Yeah, Chad Hooper, three 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 South Displanes, Chicago, Illinois six zero six six one.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And Counselor Borstein, there are no uh, objectors have raised their hands, so you are free to do the short form.
Terrific. We will definitely do that. I know it's been a long day already. Um, so again, Scott Borstein with the Law Office of Neil and Leroy here on behalf of the Chicago Board of Education. Um, as you is already sworn in. Our witnesses are joined by Ariel Vaca from the board and Chad Hooper, our project engineer. Um, this is a a terrific uh open space and playground project for the Haight Elementary School at fifteen eighteen West Granville. The the vast majority of the project is is uh permitted, but and and if you want more detail, Chad can certainly go into it, but we're installing a couple benches and a wood bridge that goes over a bioswale that's in the western portion of the lot, and just those items only are the ones that require the variation. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it was basically, I think, six point seven feet we needed to go down to. Um, and and where the setback is, by the way, it also abuts an alley. Um, so it's not like we're, uh, you know, on top of any other uh neighboring properties. So, um, the project, uh, you know, has, we've not received any kind of objections from the community. The project was announced by the alderman back at a ribbon cutting ceremony for another project at the school. And then subsequently, of course, we sent out our notices, but we the alderman also sent out a uh uh, community blast to everybody on his uh, uh, mailing list, notifying them of the project, the fact that we need this variation, and also advising them about the time of the hearing. Um, so I think we've canvassed hopefully enough for Commissioner Toya, um, or the community. And um, so with that, I'll let me just call our witnesses then and and do the short form uh swearing or a testimony.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, Ariel, we'll start with you.
Yeah.
Uh, you're familiar with the project and the uh affidavit and conclusions and findings of fact that we submitted on behalf of the board and uh which we submitted uh to the board. And if you were to testify further today, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions of that affidavit?
Yes.
Terrific. And Chad, again, you're the project engineer for this. You designed this project. Uh, and we prepared uh an affidavit on your behalf uh, again, with findings and conclusions that addressed all the standards required for obtaining a variation. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Terrific. Um, we'll turn it back to the board if there's any other questions then.
Questions from the board?
Uh, Chair and Commissioner Don just had a question. In terms of the selection use of artificial turf, could you just walk us through where that's located and why that decision was made?
Chad, you wanna go ahead and address that?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so the the artificial turf is that hatch area that had kind of little crosses in it. And then um there's a a raised mound with those with those contours right there. And then the path through that artificial turf is just really for different colors, which is which which leads you from the existing playground to the south and to the the proposed bridge. Um, that leads into that goes over bioswale and then leads into like the natural area that we're trying to maintain to the north. And the the real main reason for improving this area is because if if you may have seen in the previous photos, the area is just completely worn down grass, uh, didn't have really great drainage. And um, that was really the reason for providing the artificial turf and giving giving the kids another place to run around.
Does the turf actually improve drainage?
It does, yes. It's permeable.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? All right, no other questions. We will take this one under advisement.
Terrific. Thank you. Have a good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you as well.
Okay. Next up is three fifty-six dash twenty-two dash Z. This is eighteen ten North Orleans. If you're here in supporter objection, please raise your hand and we will get you promoted. Okay, uh, let's see here. Counselor, uh, Citron?
Yes, thank you.
I who are your who are your witnesses today?
Uh, I hope they're on after I I I know you've had a very long hearing. Annette Madonis and Tom Niemick are architects.
Let me see, let me see. I I see Todd. I'm looking for Annette Madonis.
I'm here.
Oh, excellent.
Okay, great. Thank you, Annette. I know it's been a long day.
Okay, great. Um, let me let me get your um chair, chair, what do we? Hold on, do we have objectors on this one?
Yes, I promoted.
Mister Chairman, hello. My name is Sach Kubo, Sach Mari Kubo. I have submitted an objection letter. However, I believe my questions were answered. So at this point, I do not have any further questions or objections. I believe, uh, they have raised the uh the fence height and also they did satisfactory explanation to my questions.
Oh, okay, so.
And also, I would like to acknowledge that um I received the most help from uh Mr. Taylor Ness at TMI, um, I should say, Alderman Knutson's uh office as well. So I'm sorry, I apologize. I did not the technicality of what I should do, so I just stayed on.
No, that's 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 fine. So so if I understand you correctly, uh, you were originally going to object, but then after having some conversations, uh, you're withdrawing your objection. Is that is that?
I do not know. I would still like my uh objection letter, or rather, the public opinion letter to be recorded.
Okay.
For the, however, I do not have any further questions, nor do I um have the necessity for it.
Okay, well, all right. So just so just stay on, um, because what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through the applicant's case. Uh, they'll put their case on and then um uh, we will turn to you as the objector to state your objection. And uh, if you want to ask any questions of the applicant, you are free to do so. Um, and then we'll go back to the applicant for uh rebuttal and closing, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. However, what do I say if I don't have any objections anymore?
You can just say at that time, I no longer have an objection.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry for everyone for.
No, 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 you're fine.
Thank you. I'll mute myself.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, uh, Counselor Citron, let me get your uh witnesses slow uh sworn. Um, Annette Madonis, could you please state your name and address, please?
Uh, yes, Annette Madonis, eighteen fourteen North Orleans, Chicago, Illinois six zero six one four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And uh Todd Nemeick? Could you say your name and address, please?
Yes, Todd Nemeick, um, Sminja Architects Principal. Um, I live at two oh four West St. James in Arlington Heights.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. And I can see that we do have uh Taylor Ness on. Uh, would you like to speak now or or at the end? It's your your call.
I can speak now. Um, for the record, my name is Taylor Nessie, Chief Director of Zoning and Urban Development in Alderman Knudsen's office in the Forty-third Ward.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, Chairman.
Thank you.
Um, we had submitted an initial letter of support after review of this project was completed by the Landmarks PRC Committee and the Old Town Triangle Association in twenty twenty-one, I do believe. Um, and we had submitted a letter when Alderman Smith was in office when the initial application for this variation was filed. We have no objection. We support the work that they've done to minimally alter a historic structure that has a very unique configuration on its lot. Um, we appreciate the fact that they've done most of the work internally to accommodate this unique condition of the property. And yesterday I did have the opportunity to reply to Ms. Kubo and her objections and give a little bit more context to her um, to kind of explain the work that the applicant and their the team has done to really do an amazing job to pervert preserve this um this property. So we support it. I reviewed it with uh Alderman Knudsen to refresh that stance of support, and we are excited to see this get underway. Thank you.
Great. Uh, well, thank you for uh for coming in and and expressing your support. Um, with with that, let's uh turn it over to uh Counselor Citron. Uh, since we may have a a potential objector here, let's just go, you know, go through, put your. Since we may have a potential objector here, let's just go, you know, go through, put your case on, have your witnesses testify. And and then we'll we'll turn it over to the objector and see if she has still has any objection.
Thank you. I appreciate Mister Chairman, members of the zoning Board of Appeals, again Bernard Citron from the Law Firm of Thompson Colbert, representing the owners and applicant here today. As noted, we have a very unique property in the fact that the house is located almost entirely with what would otherwise be the rear yard. Of this property. We also have sort of a a unique set of requests here. We are asking for a reduction of the minimum rear yard from thirty five feet to two point five feet. The reason for that is we're not going farther back with the with the building. We're bowling up. But since the building is already located within the rear yard, we need to ask for that variation. The south side yard setback is asking for a zero setback, but as we pointed out. To both the neighbor who was on the call today and to everybody else. We aren't building anything there. We the only place to provide off street parking is in that south side yard, but because parking is not a permitted exemption to the side yards, we had to ask for a zero. I think it's important to note for the record because this was a concern that was brought up by the neighbor. Which is that we are not building what what you see on our drawings is all that can be built there based on these variations. We cannot. Add to the building and move it any closer. In fact, if I'm reading the drawings correctly, we're actually taking down. An existing staircase that intrudes into that south side yard. So we're actually opening up that area a bit more. One of the concerns that was raised was a fence that was being placed at the front portion. Where the cars would park. That was a request from the Old Town Triangle Association to screen any cars that were parking there. We, of course, agreed to it. I'm not sure exactly why we had a seven point five foot fence there during the whole time, but we have reduced that now to six feet, which is a permitted. Fence. With that, Todd, I'd like to call you as our witness to go through some of the outline. You could first state your name and address.
Certainly, Todd Nemeek, SMG Architects. Two oh four West St. James to Arlington Heights. This project existing.
Let me stop you one question. You are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, are you not?
I am.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, um, this this project is primarily to reuse this existing building on this. Kind of atypical location on the site. It's all the way back. And so we are taking down an existing. Stair that is in disrepair and not structurally in good shape. To provide this side yard parking area. Just that grade, but otherwise we're staying within the building with the exception of dormering up a little bit in the rear. To insert a little bit of a mezzanine in the within the building proper, but we've. Presented this to Old Town Triangle. We've shown them to their satisfaction that the dormers will not be as tall as the ridge of the existing roof. And that everything's set back as much as possible and is going to try to be as. Have as little visibility from the. From Orleans Street than. Is possible. So we've complied, I think, with all those requests with Old Town. We went through landmarks and we certainly want to make sure that the neighbors. Concerns are addressed.
So the the variation we're asking in terms of the vertical height at the rear, that is the minimum variation that we could ask and still be able to. Create the building that the owners and applicant need for their purposes.
Correct.
And you've in fact reduced everything down to what is the minimum that would be otherwise needed.
Correct.
So we're not really increasing the footprint of the building other than the one dormer on the south side yard, but the remaining, we are in effect taking down the stairway to allow for that.
Yeah, we're at a net reduction in the FAR, if I remember correctly.
So it's actually somewhat of a smaller building overall.
Yes.
I think you briefly talked about you did bring this through the city's Historic Preservation Division.
Yes.
And they signed off on everything that's in the the shown here now.
That is true. Yes.
Could you briefly describe why the strict compliance with the applicable minimum lot area standards will create practical difficulties? Or particular hardship for this property?
The viable reuse of this building does not, you know, in its current configuration is not. Not attainable. We need to, you know, the. It's a hardship not to have off street parking in in this particular area where parking can be a challenge. And we're trying to preserve, we're preserving the historic elements on the front of the facade entirely and we where we can't. Save the existing materials, we're going to replicate them. So we are staying consistent with the neighborhood and this this. This reduction is allowed is really being requested to allow us to keep the building where it's located on the lot.
And would it have been viable to tear down the building and still meet all the standards, especially the historic standards in this neighborhood?
We did not go there, but no, I don't think we you could.
And in or in the only place otherwise to provided off street parking would have actually been in the building itself. From the rear and that would have significantly reduced the available living space in the building to the point where it would no longer be viable for the owners.
Correct. It's it's a it's a challenging building to just get the exiting to work because the footprint is so small. It's it's almost the size of a. It's like a larger coach house type structure is really what it it looks like.
Are there other structures? Are there other coach houses like this in the in the community in the neighborhood on this block?
There's no primary structures that look like this that I'm aware of. And I didn't really evaluate whether there were other coach houses proper in the neighborhood.
Will the variations, if granted, alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
No.
And is your testimony that the building is compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, other than its location, building scale and project design?
That is true. It is.
Will the proposed variations impair inadequate supply of light and air to adjacent property or increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety?
It will not engender additional danger to the public. It will actually reduce. The setbacks of the current structure somewhat with the demolition of the existing stair.
So that will effectively not affect light near to the neighboring structure?
Correct.
And pursuant to section seventeen one zero five five zero five zero zero. Um, will this design help to maintain the orderly and compatible land use and development pattern patterns? By utilizing an existing structure in the neighborhood in keeping with the FAR and height standards of the subject district?
It will.
And it will also preserve the character of this subject historic district?
It will.
Any would there be any negative effects that you would? Testify to regarding traffic, public safety or property values if this is constructed as noted?
No, I I think that this building has been unoccupied for quite some time, and I think that this will be a good use for the neighborhood at large and the applicant as well.
I have nothing further of our architect. Do you want to ask questions or should we proceed to the next witness?
Let's let's go through your case and then we'll see if there's questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Madonis, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Annette Madonis, eighteen fourteen North Orleans, Chicago, Illinois, six, zero, six, one, four.
And you are one of the beneficiaries of the trust that owns the property?
Correct.
You own the home to the north and you purchased the subject property that so your adult child and their family. Could move into their home and he also to have more room for visiting family members?
Yes.
So you will be you will be living next door to your child.
Yes.
If this goes through. Will that allow you to support your children now and be near them as you age?
Yes.
So this is needed to basically not just provide for your children, but also to help provide for your future at this location.
Correct.
And you've stayed you've lived in this neighborhood for thirty seven years and you'd be like you you would want to stay there, which would otherwise be difficult if your children weren't living right next to you.
That that is that is correct.
And you were part of the process going through both the neighborhood with the neighbors and with the historic preservation and you fully support. Whatever changes that they required to the floor to the site plan and floor plans?
Yes. Yes.
And you have agreed that whatever if if these variations are granted. Specifically that side 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 yard or south side yard variation, that's it. You're only putting you're only asking for that for the car. You can't. You understand you cannot build anything further and that's outside other than what's shown on these plans.
Yes, I do.
And the fence that we're adding in front that is not going to be connected to your neighbor's property in any form or way, correct?
Correct. It's we're not.
With that, I have no further questions of the witness.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this time? One thing I do want to just state on the record is that you you did did acknowledge that. The fence is going to be six feet high, so we're going to amend the 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 agenda. To reflect that the the fence will be six feet, not seven point five.
And we had submitted a revised plan showing that notated on it, so we're fine with that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, let me go to Ms. Kubo. Ms. Kubo, having having heard the applicant's case, do you still have any objection? Oh, you're you're muted right now, but let me.
I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if I should mute mute myself. Yes, I heard your question.
Oh, let me before you speak any further, let me swear you in. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Sach Maria Kubo. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Did you say? DOB? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was my age. Sorry, eighteen oh six North Orleans Street, Chicago, Illinois, six, zero, six, one, four.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Mister Chairman, yes, I do.
Thank you. So the question posed to you now is, having heard the applicant's case, do you still have any objection?
No, I do not about what they're asking for now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I do appreciate learning about what they're trying to do. I it was very unclear in the application. Verbiage and I really appreciate learning details.
Excellent, excellent.
I do have one question if I'm allowed to ask.
Go ahead.
I recall. Mrs. Madennis and I believe it was either her attorneys and architects, I do not remember specifically. Mentioning that they were planning to install. Sprinkler system because they do have a car parked right there, right inches from my coach house. I do have a coach house in the back. I I could not. I don't know how to read the plans, but I could not tell. Where if it's still there or they took it down from the plan.
Todd, do you is this at all?
I can speak. Yes. Yes, we're required with the new code, we're allowed to maintain one exit in the building if we sprinkler the building. So we are going to put a residential sprinkler system within the building. It really is not related to the parking in any way that I'm aware of. Or familiar with, but we are going to definitely sprinkle the building itself. Yeah.
Todd, I think I made. Oh, sorry. Am I allowed to speak? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Todd. I think I met you somewhere before. I said that was probably you, but thank you so much. It's really good to know that. At the detail. Thank you. And appreciate Annette for doing that as well.
Okay. So. So your 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 objection is you don't have an objection for this for this project. We've heard the applicant's case. Do does the board have any other questions?
Mister Chairman, if I may be clear, I'm sorry, I have to be. I I used to be paralegal, so I I'm a little bit detail oriented. I just want to state that I have no objections to. To their application, this application, yes.
Correct. And that's what we're here for. That's all.
Thank you.
Okay, and it does not sound like we have any other questions from the board, so we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wish everyone a wonderful weekend. Thank you. Enjoy the lovely weather. May I now leave the session?
Yes, you may.
Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mister Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think at at this time, we are going to have a recess so that the board can get some lunch. We will reconvene at. Let's say. Two. Say two twenty five. So I moved that we that we recessed to two twenty five. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes. We are in recess until two twenty five.